Ryan.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Maps.
Here.
Rubio.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. We'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before council, it was virtually.
Is the city attorney on mic or is your mic on?
I think we corrected it. I'll start over, though.
Okay.
Welcome.
Good feeling this time.
That's right. Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify, unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. First up is communications. First individual, please. Item 321.
Request of Portland Advocates for Lead-Free Drinking Water to Address Council Regarding Portland Water Bureau and Failure to Protect Public Health. They are joining us online.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
First and foremost, I want to thank our National Coalition for the tremendous amount of work we've done to get the lead out of drinking water. It's been 10 years since the Flint water crisis, as of tomorrow, and 32 years since Portland's. Because of community advocacy, EPA is close to achieving a stronger regulation this October, known as the Lead and Copper Rule Improvements, or just L-C-R-I. It's a bright spot for us, but only if EPA closes loopholes. Portland Water Bureau has quietly exploited them for years, and it appears they're looking for new ones. There's no reason lead should be in our tap water. It's a cumulative irreversible neurotoxin impacting pregnant women, nursing and bottle-fed infants, communities of color, just to name a few. And it's why we're back. Portland Water Bureau is still not protecting them. Instead of being held accountable for known and avoidable high water lead levels, Portland Water Bureau leaders were promoted. In short, the Bureau has been failing to protect public health. The NRDC touched on this in their press release about the L-C-R-I. Here's what they said. "It has become clear," this is quote, "it has become clear to EPA that the public was not being protected from lead in drinking water after numerous crises occurred in 2001 with DC, Lenten 2014, Newark in 2018, and in Portland since 1997." It begs the question. If Portland, if PWB won't admit this, why trust them with a jaw-dropping $2.13 billion proposal that's not federally required, is planned for the most expensive site, and will result in skyrocketing water bills? A long-serving Portland Utility Board member said this, quote, "The projected cost of the water filtration project has increased yet again. It brought back memories of that summer in '27, '17, and how PWB was essentially railroaded into agreeing to filtration in spite of lots of questions and specific objections over the initial cost," which, by the way, PWB said would be only $350 million. Both rural and urban residents continue to voice objections. A current pub member said it succinctly the other day before council approved PWB's report, quote, "There's not adequate oversight on this project. It's shocking how much the costs keep growing." Uncool. Finally, we asked the water director in menu in February, and now here we are again. Will you invite PWB Director Gabe Solmer, Water Quality Manager Yonah Alcagi, and Lead Treatment Engineer Kimberly Gupta to the dais and to do so before summer? Their comments to EPA provide a rare glimpse into Bureau decision-making. Spoiler alert, their comments don't mention minimizing the public's exposure to lead in water, which is the intent of the regulation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Next up is item 322.
Request of Dee White to Address Council Regarding Portland Water Bureau and Failure to Protect Public Health.
Good morning, Dee.
Hello. My name is Dee White. High levels of the neurotoxin lead are still a significant threat in Portland's drinking water despite a shiny new treatment plant and false assurances from the Water Bureau. But today, I'd like to speak to another large issue facing ratepayers, and that is the proposed misguided, ill-gotten filtration plant. On August the 17th, I mean, August the 2nd, 2017, Commissioner Nick Fish proposed Resolution 37309 at the afternoon city council meeting. The agenda item for this resolution basically read, "Comply with Oregon Health Authority's order to treat drinking water from the Bull Run watershed for cryptosporidium by constructing a UV facility." That day in August 2017, the council chamber was filled with Bull Run water advocates, including myself, who were there to testify against this resolution to treat with UV because there had never been any problem with cryptosporidium in our Bull Run watershed. There is still no problem with cryptosporidium in our Bull Run watershed. After our public testimony and seconds before the motion to vote on this resolution to build a UV treatment plant, Commissioner Fish proposed an amendment that substituted, quote, "construct a UV facility," end quote, and replaces with, quote, "construct a filtration plant," end quote. Commissioner Fish's quasi-legislative stunt was ruthless and unethical. The mayor and council's unanimous vote, therefore, was undemocratic. And if I may remind the audience, Mayor Wheeler, you were mayor at the time.
I was.
Just like that, treatment went from a UV plant at a little over $100 million to a filtration facility that was, they said, going to cost at most $500 million. Today, that cost has exploded and is now at $2.13 billion. Water Commissioner Maps even stated in the Oregonian that he cannot guarantee the cost will not go up again. Neither the EPA nor Oregon Health Authority is making the city of Portland build a $2 billion filtration plant. The city of Portland's elected officials are making the city of Portland build an unnecessary $2 billion trophy project, and that's just not right. So please, Mayor Wheeler and commissioners, as quickly as possible, vote to renegotiate the agreement with OHA, then amend the ill-conceived Resolution 37309 and present a reasonable plan to comply with the Safe Drinking Water Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. And I want to thank you. We don't always agree, but I appreciate that you have been tenacious. You've been here regularly for at least eight years, probably a lot longer than that.
Yeah, 20.
And I, you know what? I appreciate that. I acknowledge that. I do want to put one clarification on the table just because Nick isn't here. God rest him. But there was a little more to that discussion. I think it's helpful to have the context. We did know that the UV treatment was less for the issue of cryptosporidium. If that was the only issue we were addressing, then I completely agree with you. That would have been the cost-effective solution. What we also took into account during that discussion was that there are other challenges given where our water supply is located. It's located right on the side of a mountain in a heavily forested area. And so we were concerned about landslides. We were concerned about forest fires and other types of sediment that could work its way into the water system. And so the thinking was we could do UV. It would be the cost-effective solution. We would meet the federal requirements. We'd check the box, and we'd be done. But since we were going to go through a major construction effort anyway, why not be futuristic and think about what other challenges could potentially be faced by our water system? And we saw a couple of years ago a major out-of-control conflagration coming dangerously close to our water supply. And, you know, we do have options. Should that happen, if we have a fire there tomorrow, we can still go to well water. But we thought of this as a forward-thinking measure. I will tell you an area where I do agree with you. I am concerned about the cost escalations in this project. And that's obviously beyond the control of this council or frankly, anybody in this room, maybe even in the state. But that is an issue, and that led to a number of questions I asked when we had our Water Bureau folks here. Bottom line, I just want to say, don't always agree with you, but I appreciate your being here, participating.
Thank you, and I appreciate you pointing out the cost because that is going to continue to be a problem, and I'm going to continue to come to council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler.
As you should. Thank you, Dee. Appreciate it. Next individual, please. Item 323.
Request of Mark Porras to Address Council Regarding Government Transparency and Accountability. Mark is joining us online.
Hey, Mark.
Hey. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Mark Porras. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a member of Portland Cop Watch, but today I'm testifying just as a 20-year resident of the city of Portland. I'd like to talk about transparency, which is a prerequisite for accountability. I want to start by thanking the auditor's office and the council clerk for promoting transparency and for responding quickly to questions on agenda items, making sure people are able to testify on things that are important to them. I appreciate the Confirmed Agenda Items page on the city's website. Please add non-time certain items to the list to help the public prepare for upcoming issues at city council. The more advanced notice you give us, the more we're able to participate. We need time to free up our schedules to do so. I'm happy to say there hasn't been a police brutality settlement on the agenda since February 28th. However, I recently learned through court documents about a $30,000 judgment that Elijah Warren received for allegedly being hit in the head by PB Officer Eric Cammerer. After Mr. Warren came out of his home to talk with police, who had filled his neighborhood and home with tear gas, which he noticed when kids indoors were screaming and washing their eyes out. City council must approve all settlements over $5,000. However, judgments and jury awards are not subject to the same level of transparency. Please enhance transparency by also putting judgments and jury awards over $5,000 on the council agenda as reports. There's little difference to the public whether the party settled or a judge or jury required the city to pay out for harm caused by our local government, and the public deserves to know. Big thanks to the folks behind PDX 311 who respond to website feedback. They forward it to the right people, and it feels good when our local government both listens and is responsive. Now, there's no link to provide feedback on some pages, like the Lobbyist Registration and Quarterly Statement Reports page and the Police Review Board Public Reports page. Those are just a couple of the many pages where Portlanders should be able to subscribe for updates and new information. I appreciate the auditor publicizing council meetings on social media. It's even more important to publicize work sessions since they're scheduled irregularly. And it's where we often get first notice of important city work that would be enhanced with community oversight and input. Regarding social media, many city accounts don't display the city seal, making it hard to tell the real accounts from parodies. Please also list official social media accounts on the city website, along with the names of employees who have access to post to each of them. I'm almost done, but a word on the awful camping ban item at 4:00 PM. Commissioner Gonzalez's amendments on the camping ban to substitute Exhibits A and B without providing redline versions or the existence of any impartial analysis are the opposite of transparency. Regardless, please stop wasting everyone's time and energy attempting to criminalize homelessness. Spend it instead on support services and housing that people desperately need. I didn't have time to get into the year-two Portland Street Response Report that never seemed to make it to a council work session or the gutting of the Police Accountability Commission's work, both bad for transparency. And I still don't understand how a city that boasts community policing requires a public records request to learn the names of our police officers while the community members serving on advisory boards are listed on the city website. Thank you all for your public service. Our city government works best when people are fully informed and are genuinely encouraged to participate. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Next individual, please. Item 324.
Request of Christina Quanalo to Address Council Regarding Death at Crosswalk on North Portland Road.
Welcome.
Christina was going to join in person. Doesn't look like they've arrived.
All right. Next individual, please. 325.
Request of Michael O'Callahan to Address Council Regarding Death.
Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. You know, first, I'd like to start off with something good for the people out there that are watching. If you want to make a difference in this world, a real difference, go out and pick up a piece of litter. Okay? You will, without question, make our world a better place. Okay? And along that line, would you please replace the dumpster at Fourth and Division Place? They took it away last week. We'd like to have it back. Okay? And along that line, you know, with those dumpsters, you know, a lot of housies are dumping stuff in there, you know, big stuff. If you would do one of two things, either put a two-foot square in the plastic lids that go on there reinforced with metal, or put a riser on the flip thing that locks the dumpster so it only raises two feet so people can only get certain-sized objects in there because most of the people on the street are taking their common garbage, which isn't very much, and putting it in there. A two-foot hole would allow them to do that and stop all of these housies from dumping. Another thing you could do, make it illegal to make pallets available to the public. Okay? And stop this burning you're trying to stop. Okay? On the question of deaths, now I've been involved with this issue for probably 15, 17 years. Okay? Ted, you have increased the deaths on the street 245% in your reign. Congratulations, okay? These sweeps are killing people. I would hope you would recognize that, but apparently you are blind to that. I'm on the street. I see it. You kill my friends. Okay? This isn't right. It's not a good way to treat human beings. Okay? Another thing I want to announce, okay? I'm going to be running for mayor. Okay? Go on my website, mayormikeoc.com, all lowercase. Look at the six housing, six housing solutions, okay? There are a number of other things on there you can look at. People polling Portland is one that's really kind of fun. But anyway, check it out, you know, and check brags, okay? In social life, we're not supposed to brag, okay? But when you're running for office, you get to brag, huh? Okay? Check it out, okay? This scene that you've created is unfortunate, but hopefully, we'll be able to turn it around in the future. Oh, and as far as water goes, I used to do water and sewer pipe, okay? The water pipes are lined with asbestos. Maybe you didn't know then. I do because I cut the pipes. There's asbestos in our water, okay? Check it out. They don't check for it. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. And Mr. O'Callahan, if I could just briefly respond. First of all, thank you for seeking public office. A lot of people spend a lot of time being upset, criticizing, yelling, screaming, but very few people are willing to take that extra step and expose themselves to what comes with running a campaign. So first of all, I just, I want to thank you. I believe in the democratic process, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate you just saying there's small things that we can do to improve our community, like picking up a piece of litter rather than just walking on by. Thank you for that as well. I could not disagree with you more that sweeps are killing people. I'm not aware of a single sweep that has caused anybody's death, but I look into why the hundreds of people do die on our streets. And they die predominantly for these three reasons. First is exposure to the elements. In other words, they freeze to death or they have heat-related deaths. And that is just one reason why I think people are in a better circumstance if they come to one of our sanctioned camps that actually have air conditioning and heating and the ability to get out of the elements. The second reason they die is overdoses, and these are in no particular order. We know that first, P2P meth had a significant impact, synthetic opioids, on the community. And we also know that fentanyl is a killer that's out there, and it's pervasive. And now we have xylazine to contend with, sometimes referred to as trank. And the whole basis of my agenda over eight years has been not just to round people up and send them away, it's been to connect them with navigation services through our task sites and our Safe Rest villages, give them access to whatever help they need. Behavioral health, substance use disorder, job training, domestic violence, survivorship, whatever they need to help get them off and keep them off the streets. And even as we heard from Commissioner Maps, who gave us a great presentation two weeks ago, pedestrian deaths. The homeless are extremely highly overrepresented amongst the fatalities on our streets. And I can see why that is. I watch people try to cross 84, Highway 84, to get to their camp. And I've seen people do it on 26 to get to a median camp that I've asked to be removed multiple times, and people cut the fences and they come back because they have to walk across an active freeway to get there. And that has also become problematic. So I respectfully disagree with you. I believe that the unsanctioned camps in the circumstances that our homeless neighbors are experiencing is toxic for those individuals. And that's why I'm seeking to create better alternatives to help them get off the streets. We can agree to disagree, but I just wanted to give you my perspective since you gave me yours. Commissioner Gonzalez.
I agree with Mayor Wheeler.
That should be the theme for the whole day right there.
That's right.
There we go.
And on a good note.
Problem solved. Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks, Michael. It's good to see you. Thank you for being here. That completes our communications unless Christina showed up.
Christina Quanalo.
Okay, good. We'll move into the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled from consent?
No items have been pulled.
Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Consent agenda is adopted. First-time certain, please. Item 326.
Appoint members and alternates to the Citizen Review Committee.
Colleagues, next up is an item, appointing five members and three alternates to the Citizens Review Committee. Before I welcome our presenters and our invited testimony, I need to quickly amend the resolution to add the applications of our appointees. This is obviously something of a technical amendment. Colleagues, I move to amend the resolution to include the applications as part of the overall package. Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan, seconds. Kealan, call the roll on the amendment.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The amendment passes. Thanks. Now, welcome Samir Canal from the Community Safety Division to walk us through these appointments. Good morning.
Thank you, and good morning, Mayor Wheeler. Good morning, Commissioners, Maps, Rubio, Ryan, and Gonzalez. Good morning, Portland. For the record, my name is Samir Canal. I am Advisory Boards and Commissions Manager for the Community Safety Division, with supported Independent Police Review on this recruitment. The Citizen Review Committee was created in 2001 to improve police accountability, promote higher standards of police services, and increase public confidence. They are responsible for ensuring impartial hearings of appeals, developing policy recommendations to Independent Police Review, to city council, to the commissioner in charge of police and the chief of police, as well as providing an advisory role to Independent Police Review and PPB's internal affairs. The committee includes 11 members of the community who are broadly representative of Portland and has historically included alternates as well. The selection process for Citizen Review Committee is outlined in city code. The Community Safety Division supported with outreach for this recruitment. Three weeks ago, council considered and approved a reappointment of members whose terms was expiring and who were nominated for reappointment by Director Caldwell. At the time, we noted that after the reappointment, the CRC would have five vacancies and no current alternates, but also that there was an ongoing selection process with many community members having applied. As promised, the selection process did yield many qualified applicants, eight of which are before you today. The appointment would ensure that CRC can maintain its work for up to the next three years, continuing its work through numerous changes in the city government, including around accountability. I will first pass it to the five nominees for CRC membership to introduce themselves, and then the three nominees for CRC alternate membership. First will be Forrest Bowles, then Brian Butler, Nate Holton, Nate Kuhn, and Noah Truesdale. And I believe Forrest is on Zoom.
Thank you for this opportunity. Just want to step up and serve the city as best I can. Lived in Portland the last eight years. Apologize if the connection's a little off. I am currently in Germany at the moment, work trip, but a proud member of the city and just want to step up and serve. So it was a great honor. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Forrest. Thanks, Forrest.
Thank you, Forrest. Brian Butler might be on Zoom.
Good morning. Yeah, good morning, everyone. My name is Brian Butler, and like Forrest, I am relatively new to the city. I moved to Portland over a year and a half ago, having lived in the U K for over thirty years. I'm very excited to be a part of the committee and to help raise the profile and change the perception of Portland as we see it or as the nation sees it economically. They're not here, so they don't know. So we want to change that perception.
Nate?
Hello, everybody. Nate Holton. I am also relatively new to Portland, having moved here about two years ago from Milwaukee, Wisconsin. There I served under Governor Evers on the Wisconsin Department Advisory Board and am accustomed in various roles to balancing complex interests like community and policing matters, and I'm just looking forward to trying to provide some value to Portland.
And Nate Coon?
Well, good morning, everybody. I'm excited to be here. Thank you for the time. I'm just excited to join this board, serve the community. I have only moved to Portland about six months ago, but I'm eager to add my perspective. I'm from Minneapolis, Minnesota, served on or worked for multiple law firms there, and then went and got my masters. So I'm excited to serve the community and begin the journey here in Portland.
Is Noah here online?
Sorry, I lost the protocol.
Good morning. My name is Noah Truesdale. I was a reedie, so I lived in Portland for four years before moving to New York to work for the Office of Inspector General for the N I P D, where I issued transparency and civilian accountability for the New York Police Department. I'm excited to bring that value and experience to helping the Portland Police Bureau become more accountable and transparent in its operations.
Thanks. And then the alternates, Tony Greiner, Joseph Meili, and Sean Osaki. I'll have Joseph go first. Yes.
You can stay.
Pleased to be able to serve. I was born in Portland in nineteen forty-one and have lived here ever since. So I, we have a lot of new members, and I will represent the other group. So anyways, I'm pleased and honored to be able to serve.
Thank you. Sean is online?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Sean Osaki. I am a Portland resident of twenty-three years, residing in North Portland for the past twenty-one. I'm a current Portland Bureau of Emergency Management Neighborhood Emergency Team member. I'm a veteran of the United States Army, and just as in past, I'd want to give back to my communities so much as the community has given to me. So my contribution back.
Thank you, Sean. And Tony's unable to join, so I'll just read the brief bio here. He's lived in Portland for thirty years, retired from Portland Community College in 2020 after a career as a librarian. He's the author of two books and been hired to speak and teach at libraries and library conferences in Miami, Ontario, and San Francisco. His volunteer service includes work with Meals on Wheels Catholic Charities and Metropolitan Family Services, and he enjoys hiking, history, and baking. As noted with previous appointments earlier this month, the intention is that the term end date of March thirty-first, 2027, will get the committee through the end of the transition period to the new oversight system. And with that, we'll conclude the presentation and open it up to questions. I should note that Independent Police Review Deputy Director Kelsey Lloyd is available on Zoom to answer questions as well.
Very good. Thank you. Great presentation. Welcome and thank you all. We appreciate your stepping up. Do we have any questions, colleagues? Do we have any public testimony?
We have one person signed up.
All right.
Dan Handelman, Portland Cop Watch.
Welcome, Dan.
Dan, you're muted.
Oh, thank you. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners Gonzalez, Maps, Rubio, and Ryan. My name is Dan Handelman. I use he/him pronouns, a member of Portland Cop Watch. And welcome to all the new Citizen Review Members. We testified before council just a few weeks ago when four current members of the CRC renewed their memberships. At the time, we mentioned two things. First, that we had no specific issues with any of the candidates, and second, that their applications should have been posted as part of the public record, since council is required to review those applications before voting. We don't agree with the statement made last month that those folks were already on CRC, so the applications weren't necessary last time. We had to double back to I P R this time to get the applications posted for the five new members and three alternates you're voting on today. They were introduced as amendment late Tuesday. While we repeat, there are no specific concerns about these candidates, city code does require that the members of CRC should reflect the demographic makeup of the community. Reading the biographies of the eight nominees and certainly seeing and hearing them today, it's hard to miss that every one of them uses he/him pronouns. But the current six CRC members, only two people use she/her pronouns. In other words, you're creating a committee which appears to have nine men and two women, and if either or both of the women resign, they'll be replaced by men. There was a long time, the early years of CRC, where there was a gender imbalance, which gave way to a predominantly female board and eventually two female co-chairs in the 2010s. We understand it's difficult to keep the independent police review and Citizen Review Committee energized while they're waiting for the city to implement ballot measure twenty-six, two seventeen. The Police Accountability Commission suggested that people serving on CRC and the police review board should get preference to be seated on the new board, since they will have had most of the training that they'll need to understand police policies and misconduct investigations. That said, we understand there are ongoing efforts to recruit more members. Therefore, a high priority should be placed on female and gender nonconforming applicants to meet the criteria you required in the code. Again, no offense to the alternate chosen today, but if such applicants are found and approved by council, they should be prioritized to fill any empty seats. And those seats are highly likely to open up. Our data show that an average of over two CRC members have resigned every year since CRC began in 2001. Four of those resignations happened last year. So three alternates is not adequate to fulfill another three years of CRC. As the ordinance notes, CRC members have to sit in on police review board hearings with a full set of eleven members. In addition to the five we know are in the P R B pool, maybe they will get through the rest of the seventeen W four spaces from 2021 to 2022. And to the new CRC members, I will repeat part of our testimony from March thirty-one, where we encourage the committee to set aside time at two of its business meetings when police review board semi-annual reports are released. And that way, you can discuss the process of the board and the recommendations that are made. The P R B pool members should be invited so they can meet the community they represent at the closed-door board hearings. And lastly, there are years of birth where the applicants used to be included in the applications that were released to the public, and they're warrant this year. So it's, you know, there's some, mentioned by at least one of the nominees about the age diversity issue, but that is something that we had a lot of concerns about in the early years of CRC as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Can I ask you, typically, we would have the application posted, wouldn't we? Or why don't we?
The, this is the first, I'll just be honest, the first time that we supported the recruitment, simply forgot to put it in as an attachment when it was filed. The applications received from the applications, as soon as we found out about it, we circulated it and tried to get that fixed.
Going forward, then, you would agree with Dan that the application should be included?
My understanding is for Citizen Review Committee, it's required by code specifically.
It would help me. I support it. So I was just curious why it wasn't done. And then I have a technical question, and maybe this is even legal counsel. Why do these appointments come to us sometimes as a resolution and sometimes as a report?
I think, I'll see if there is an attorney who wants to answer that first.
Okay, maybe offline later some, because I've noticed some appointments are coming as reports and some are coming as resolutions, and it seems like there should be some consistency there.
My understanding, and I will make sure that I corrected if this is wrong, is that if it's a council appointment versus a mayoral appointment, that has to do with, the report is technically from the mayor to council and accepted, whereas the resolution is adopted by--
Okay. Well, that's the best explanation I've heard. So, and if that's not the case, could somebody just ping me?
I have a quick question, too.
Commissioner Rubio.
So I just wanted to touch on the representation to question that Dan mentioned. I too noticed too, but I just don't know the makeup of the committee and wanted to know. And I just want to say, very impressed with all your backgrounds and the perspectives you bring, and I'm excited to see your contributions on the committees. But can you talk a little bit more about going forward and how you're going to, you know, what are the plans in terms of gender balance on the committee?
Yes. So recruitments, there's sort of two parts to it. The ability to acquire applications from a very representative group of people, and then the selection process. And each selection process for each advisory group is a little different and has to weigh different things. In terms of recruitment, though, the first step is to maximize the pool and to make it as representative as possible. We do outreach, and it's noted in the community impacts and community involvement section here of going out and speaking to neighborhood associations, community groups, talking to existing volunteers on other advisory groups and asking them to refer it. We are aware of the concern for this particular committee, and I think if you have seen with some of the others, the Police Accountability Commission was fifteen to five, female identifying to male identifying at the beginning, and it ended up a little closer. We always look to try and find what is, whatever demographic is not represented at a given time, and focus on that in the recruitment for new applicants. And then, again, each group has its own selection process that has, is required by code.
Okay. Great. I just wanted to hear, and it sounds like you acknowledge that you have an eye out for that balance. Thank you.
And also thank you to Dan for bringing that up.
All right. Very good. I'm not seeing any other questions. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Could you just remind us the size of this committee?
It has eleven members, and then it can have any number of alternates. Should this be adopted, it'll have three alternates.
Got it. And I think an ongoing question I'm having and asking my office is, as we're thinking about post-January one, 2025, the various boards and commissions we have out there, what's the right size of them going forward? And it's just a broader, I think we need to make some space for how we manage the substantial number of boards and commissions we have. It's not a particular question of this. It's just, are they the right size? Is the division between what's appointed by council and the mayor properly thought out? Because I think that distinction becomes more clear post-January one, 2025. And I, I'm mostly posing it as a question. What's the right size of these boards and commissions? Who should be appointing it going forward? And that we just sort of create a space. So welcome your thoughts on that, not necessarily now, but as you're sort of thinking about that and going forward.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Great. Please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yeah, thank you very much. This was a good report, and I appreciate the dialogue between Commissioner Rubio. And I could tell that you're earnest about that, Samir, and good work. And thank you for being here. We don't always have the appointees show up even from afar. So Forrest, Brian, there are two Nates, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And so I'm like now looking at the bios that you did get to us. Thank you for doing that. And Joseph. And then Sean, I thought that was hilarious that you acknowledged that, we have a lot of new Portlanders that have arrived during the last four years, and as an alternate, you have a different lens. But I really want to just acknowledge the statement that I think it was you, Brian Butler, made that there's an, you've been here, what, six months? I can't remember. You're fairly new. But I like that you just said, "They don't see what I see. They're not here." And so this is about changing the perception. And it's great to have that type of motivation as well to serve. I appreciate all of you. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
I just want to thank you all for your willingness to serve an important area for the city. I vote aye.
Maps?
Yeah, I'll echo Commissioner Gonzalez's sentiments. Really appreciate you being here in person. Really appreciate everyone volunteering to serve on this important committee. I am delighted. I vote aye.
Rubio?
Thank you all again for being here. It's great to see you in person. And also, this is a really, this is a really big time of change for the city. So you're getting it at a really critical moment, and I commend you for that. And really excited to see what you bring. I vote aye.
Wheeler?
Much appreciated. Thanks for your leadership. Sorry the pay isn't better. It will be interesting work. We appreciate your perspective. I vote aye. And the resolution is adopted and the appointments are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next up, a proclamation, item three, three, three.
Proclamation in memory of Latin American artist Geraldo Calderon.
Colleagues, today's first proclamation comes from the community organizations, community organization, Friends of Geraldo Calderon, an esteemed member of the community whose creative contributions have left a lasting impact both in our city and in Oregon as a whole. I'll now turn it over to Commissioners Ryan and Rubio, who are cosponsoring this proclamation with me for their opening remarks. Commissioner Ryan first, then Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I had a different run of show in my head. Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for highlighting this and bringing it forward. This is really a special day, and I'm so proud to honor Geraldo Calderon. And as a Christian of arts, I'm just especially appreciative of the link between artists and education. So in looking at your bio, it was wonderful to see. And we have a current creative laureate, Jason Margolis, who actually works as a music teacher at Roosevelt High School. And Geraldo recognizes that connection, like our current laureate, the dedication of arts and how it's linked to education. From preschool kids to young students, you would have been able to share your gifts through education, providing many, many Oregonians beyond with the opportunity to learn, to play, and share culture and community for generations to come. The strong community presence here today is a testament to Geraldo's contributions as a cherished Latin American and Oregonian artist. Your spirit will live forever, and it's woven into the cultural fabric of Portland. So I'm just thrilled that you're here with us today so we can honor you. And thank you so much again, Commissioner Rubio, for bringing this forward.
Thank you. It's my absolutely deep honor to recognize artist, community leader, and activista Geraldo Calderon. I had the privilege of knowing Geraldo over the years and saw firsthand how he touched the lives of so many people, from his friends and family to all of us that were honored to share space with him, and I'm glad that we're honoring him today. For those of us who knew him, we remember the vibrancy, realness, and sheer love for music and culture that he radiated, and how much he reveled in sharing his Mexican and Latin American culture with all those who came into contact with him. And over the decades of his life in Portland, he shaped Latina arts and culture through his music and mentorship of other artists, and deep love for the city of Portland. So today, we'll hear from some folks who know him well to share a little bit about his legacy. And I'm pleased to call Helen Daltozzo from the Regional Arts and Culture Council, Matias Trejo de Dios from the Instituto de Cultura Oregoniana, Rosa Floyd, who is Oregon's Teacher of the Year, and Joaquin Lopez, Community Arts Leader and Artist, and also one of the city's creative laureates. Yeah.
Come on up, folks.
Are they here?
Are they here? I don't know.
Did you see Joaquin?
Are they online?
Are they online?
You're not here to present, are you? On three, three, three? No? Okay. Surprise.
I'm wondering if there are some--
Are they here in spirit?
I know that there are so many of them that are not here. I'm wondering if there's wires crossed on the time, or--
Should we table it till the end of the session?
Yes. Why don't we do that?
Why don't we do that? And if they show up in the meanwhile, we can reinsert it.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ahead of schedule?
I'm sorry?
Are we ahead of schedule?
This is regular agenda.
Okay.
So why don't we do this? We'll assume they'll come later. We'll go ahead and table this, and we'll reengage when they get here. So we'll move, please, to the next item, item three, three, four, also a proclamation.
Proclaim April twenty-first through twenty-seventh, 2024 to be National Volunteer Week.
Colleagues, I'll now turn this over to Commissioner Ryan to introduce the item.
I'm looking over at staff to see if they're here for this item as well. Can you raise your hand if you're here for--
The support. I know Sonia is on her way, and volunteers--
And there's a gentleman in the back there as well. Okay, good. We have enough to get it started. I think they're surprised that we've been as brief for this morning than usual. So colleagues, as we gather here today, I'm honored to celebrate National Volunteer Week. It's a time when we can collectively pause to recognize and celebrate the extraordinary contributions of volunteers who dedicate their time, their talents, and their passion to the city of Portland, which of course means they're doing that for the entire city. Throughout the year, volunteers from our diverse communities embody the spirit of compassion and service, enriching our core values, and embodying what it means to be a Portlander. Whether you're mentoring a youth, feeding the hungry, serving on an advisory board, caring for an environment, saving lives during extreme weather, volunteers play an indispensable role in shaping our community. Volunteers support city government, which means supporting the people of Portland in a variety of ways, including, well, here's a few facts. Two thousand volunteers worked as part of the Neighborhood Emergency Teams Program. Four thousand six hundred volunteers joined the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and solved to remove more than one hundred twenty-seven thousand pounds of trash from our parks, neighborhoods, businesses, districts, and our natural areas. More than a hundred and fifty professionals and student volunteers support homeowners earning low incomes in, earning low incomes in the Bureau of Development Services Empowered Neighborhood Program. As we reflect on how volunteers have touched our lives and transformed the city for the better, let us take this moment to express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for their efforts. I now like to introduce, is she online, our main presenter, Sonia Shemansky, the new deputy city administrator for the Vibrant Community Service Area, to speak about the volunteerism in our parks, in arts, and in children's services. The Vibrant Communities Area will always be magnified by partnerships with the community. Simply put, we rely on volunteers to make this work. Sonia, the floor is yours.
I believe Sonia's on her way. I am happy to step--
Yeah, go ahead. Thanks so much.
So thank you, council. Thank you--
I think they were lying on the other one to be first, yes.
Yeah. So thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, council. My name is Tim Collier. I'm stepping in for Sonia Shemansky, who is the interim deputy city administrator for the Vibrant Community Service Area. Today, we celebrate the work of volunteers from our service area, which includes the Office of Arts and Culture, Portland Children's Levy, and Portland Parks and Recreation, and those who support programs and services citywide. In our service area, we recruit, support, and partner with thousands of volunteers who contribute over three hundred and sixty hours of volunteer service annually. That's almost a thousand hours each day. These contributions stretch our public investments even further, bringing joy and wellness to community members and visitors, and support our community to be its best. It takes intention, focus, and strong partners to support this community of volunteers, and we are very grateful for our partnership with Portland Parks Foundation. Through this public-private partnership, the foundation cultivates park boosters and volunteers through awards, celebrations, small grants, and workshops. What do volunteers do? They offer us advice and perspective on boards. They roll up their sleeves to clean up shared community spaces, and they help local kids and families connect with programs and each other. I'm going to share a little bit about the volunteer service and how we connect with volunteers, and then we'll hear from some of our volunteers. First, the thirteen community member council, which advises the Portland Children's Levy staff and the Levy's Allocation Committee about policy development and implementation throughout our grant-making cycle. Just keeping my head swiveling to see if Sonia walks in. The council directs broad community engagement effort, co-designs the fundraising process, and recommends programs for funding. Last fiscal year, nearly ten thousand local kids were served by Levy-funded services, like mentoring and after-school programs, and over fifteen thousand were served by Levy-funded hunger relief programs. Here today, from the community council are Alex Sanchez and Amarachi Duru and Jacob Valentine. I hope I pronounced everyone's name correctly. Next, the Office of Arts and Culture celebrates the dynamic contributions of the Arts and Education and Access Fund Oversight Committee, whose thirteen diverse and passionate volunteer members review fund expenditures, progress, and outcomes. The community partners with the Commissioner of Culture and Livability, the Office of Arts and Culture, and the City of Portland's Revenue Division, the Regional Arts and Culture Council, and Portland Area Public Schools to support local art teachers and organizations. Here from City Arts and Culture Access Fund Oversight Committee is Leah Fauer. Last, our largest and longest-standing volunteer program is Portland Parks and Recreation. Under the leadership of Director Adina Long and staff, the program has grown from two hundred and seventy thousand annual volunteer hours in 2019 to three hundred and fifty thousand today. Each year, more than fifteen thousand people contribute their time, either on their own or through a business, a school, a faith group, or a community organization. And I'm happy to share that business volunteerism is nearly back to pre-pandemic levels. In 2023, the National Trust for Public Land ranked Portland as a top-ten park system nationally, and that would not have been possible without the enormous contributions of our community volunteers. We are grateful for the young children, families, and inspiring older adults. We have volunteers over ninety years old, and a thirty-five-year volunteer at the Washington Park Rose Garden who helps our system shine. Next, we'll hear from a few volunteers who I'll introduce and invite up. They're not here yet, and so we will share that information with council online and--
There's some people that are here, so why don't we do this? Why don't we allow the volunteers that are here to come up and have their voices in the room?
You know what? I'm due with the program, and we asked our volunteers to come at ten o' three, because we thought that was the time--
Oh.
Nobody else is here. I'm so sorry. I think everyone's expecting this to start at eleven.
They did. I thought it was time certain, I think.
I'm due with the program, and we asked our volunteers to come at 10:00 because we thought that was the time.
Oh.
Is there nobody else here? I'm so sorry. I think everyone's expecting this to start at 11:00.
They did. I thought it was time certain, I think.
My apologies for the misdirection and timing, but do appreciate all the volunteers who provide so much service to this city and for council taking time to share that appreciation. We'll put some stuff on social media and online to recognize those folks.
Thank you. I'm pausing for a second.
Yeah, point of order.
Yeah. Commissioner Maps, you just asked for point of order. So right now, I think we're all experiencing life, and it means that people were surprised that this showed up like 45 minutes earlier than they thought. So they're probably huffing and puffing down, and some just walk so fast that they appear as I'm trying to buy some time.
Sure.
Sonia Schmansky, it's so good to see you. Let's do this.
I have an idea.
What, do you want to take a break?
No, I have an idea. Let's move to something else, because I think I've got everybody here that I need for 335. Is that correct? And that's a fairly meaty issue, so why don't we do that? Let's table this, because I think we all want to respect the community leaders and the volunteers that are coming in for these proclamations.
I think the last two items.
Yeah, so let's just kind of do a redo on both of those when we have the people there necessary to do that. So we'll consider that a practice run. I'll table item 334. So we'll move to item 335, please.
Direct a working group to assess and plan for the creation of an integrated citywide security division.
Colleagues, the charter transition has provided us with an incredible opportunity to reevaluate and better align our services to improve the service delivery system across the city enterprise. Like so many other services within the city, security work has been largely siloed, which has led to challenges in coordination as well as in communication. This resolution authorizes the creation of a work group comprised of deputy city administrators and other key stakeholders to carry out the assessment and planning work needed to align security personnel and resources across the entire city enterprise. Alignment can take a variety of forms, which is why this work group would be tasked with assessing existing security resources, facilities needs, developing a business plan, an organizational structure, and bringing an implementation plan to council that steps us through how this new division would be structured and the stages of building it and funding it. In other words, the work that the work group does will come back to council for final approval. Creating an integrated security division will allow the city to better coordinate security planning protocols, resource requests, communication, and much more. That enhanced coordination will better facilitate our work to manage our assets and facilities and maintain safe work sites for employees and community members that visit and do business with the city. Before I turn this over to Commissioner Maps, who is my cosponsor, I have a late-breaking amendment that is technical that I need to add to the agenda. Please, I'd like to move the following. I move to amend the second-to-last "be it further resolved" section to update the implementation date from July 1, 2018 to July 1, 2028, unless alternatively any of you have mastered time travel. I will second that. Commissioner Maps seconds it. I'll see you in the time capsule, sir. Any further discussion on the amendment? Obviously, the date is being changed. Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Maps.
Hi.
Rubio.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi. The amendment is adopted. Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this resolution that the mayor and I are introducing today would set in motion a more collaborative effort to coordinate and centralize individual bureau security efforts. This coordination would more efficiently and effectively deploy our security assets and expertise across bureaus. Now, I know that all of us on this council have a security horror story that we could tell, and this resolution is really about helping future councils avoid some of the traumatic experience that we and our staff have gone through. As public works commissioner, I see and experience how our infrastructure bureaus are stepping up to respond to vandalism and other threats to protect our employees as they provide critical services. But these challenges are not unique to the infrastructure bureaus. Our security concerns are citywide. It's time, I believe, to pool the expertise across each of the city's 24 different secure bureaus, and it's time for us to coordinate our security teams, to coordinate budgets and equipment, and deploy security resources as efficiently and effectively as possible. This resolution also aligns with city operations that will come into play with the new form of government. I support this resolution, and I sure hope that you do too. And with that, why don't I turn this presentation over to staff?
Hello. My name is Manny Guerra. I'm the Security Manager for the Office of Management and Finance. I'll be giving a brief statement, and I'll be passing it over to my colleague over here on BES. Mayors and commissioners, today we come to speak to you on a new initiative, one that promises to usher in a new era of security and safety for our city. For some time now, our approach to ensuring the safety of city-owned assets has been fragmented. A few bureaus within our city have operated their independent security team functioning in silos devoid of the synergy that could be achieved through cooperation and shared purpose. This method, while well-intentioned, has not capitalized on a strength that lies in unity and collaboration. We are here to propose a resolution that marks the beginning of a significant shift in how we envision and implement security across our city-owned spaces. Our plan is to transcend these divisions and create a unified security division. This division will not only streamline our efforts but also ensure that our responses to calls for service at city-owned assets are more efficient, coordinated, and effective. We envision that our resources are pooled, information is shared seamlessly, and strategies are unified. This is not just about reducing redundancy or conserving resources, although those are certainly beneficial outcomes. It's about creating a cohesive force that's greater than the sum of its parts. By leveraging the collective expertise, people power, and resources of all bureaus, we can forge a security program that is agile, responsive, and most importantly, tailored to the unique needs of the city of Portland's diverse communities. This resolution is our first step towards opening the dialogue necessary to make this vision a reality. It is an invitation to share insights and contribute to crafting a blueprint on offering an overall better service for us. We recognize the challenges that lie ahead in aligning policies, protocols, and practices. However, the potential rewards, a safer workplace, a better service for all employees and visitors, are too great to ignore. In moving forward with this resolution, we are not just changing how we approach city security. We are reaffirming our commitment to the well-being and safety of every employee and visitor to our city-owned assets. We are embracing the power of corporate cooperation and the promise of a community united in a pursuit of safety. Together, we can build a security division that not only responds to calls for service with unmatched efficiency but also stands as a beacon of unity and resilience in the face of challenges. Thank you, and I'll pass it over to my colleague.
I think this is on... Good morning, everybody. Excuse me. Keith Moen, BES Security Manager, been with the city for about three years. Distinguished mayor, esteemed council members, it's with great pleasure to present a meticulously-crafted conceptual plan that has undergone development over the course of a year. As touched upon by my esteemed colleague, Manny, this initiative not only imbues the commitment of enhancing public safety for both individuals and assets that are crucial to the community, but the fundamental essence lies in the establishment of supportive services that transcends bureau boundaries, fostering essential interoperability, standardized security services, and the promotion of public safety to our staff, the community, and the protection of our critical resources. Currently, one of the limitations we face is our ability to adequately assist other bureaus during intricate challenges. We often encounter the very same limitations when attempting to manage them on our own. The suggested consolidation aims to enhance operational effectiveness and promote smooth cooperation within our strategic alliances. The Integration Services offers a new enhanced level of support and presents new opportunities across the city. Both staff and community can anticipate standardized security services that foster heightened professionalism, training that meets the city's expectation for its workforce, and most significantly, opportunities for career advancement that empowers these officers to take ownership in their roles. The primary asset of this proposal lies within the capacity to gain comprehensive comprehension of the requirements throughout the city and harmonize those assets without redundancies. Within the organization, we have adopted security technologies and advocate for this approach when feasible, recognizing through centralization we are striving for efficiency that directly benefits our municipal workers. Ultimately, it is crucial to cultivate cooperation amongst various sectors within the urban landscape to enhance our resiliency citywide. This proposition centers on the elimination of obstacles, utilizing shared resources and promoting openness in order to recognize and rectify support inadequacies with the appropriate resources regardless of boundaries. Once more, we extend our gratitude for the time, your dedication, your openness to have shown in us to present this to you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's everybody's. We're open to questions.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions? Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you. I'm going to be fully supportive of this. I just had a couple of questions around the edges. Manny, as you were walking through with us some of the vision in our office, you spoke to the tie-ins to police and public safety and how sometimes they're going to be working in parallel. Can you just sort of speak to that? And I think it's important as we conceptualize how this may play out going forward.
Absolutely. I think it's going to be really important that we have very collaborative support with our public safety folks. So the constant open communication with PBB is going to be essential in this. We're going to have to work together as partners and even develop that relationship, make it even stronger so that we can assist each other with different situations that may develop. I want to be clear that we are not sworn officers, and we do not have that power, so we still need to also rely on our PBB folks to assist us. But this is a collaborative approach where we can help them, they can help us. Our intent is to finally kind of bring a more synergized approach to public safety and to the safety of the city itself so that we can work better, especially for the city assets. So that's the ultimate goal that we want to have here.
And would that include issue of citations, code enforcement, and any scenarios?
Eventually, that's going to be the conversation we'll have during the work group of what powers are going to be needed for these folks to do their job effectively moving forward. So that's something that will probably be coming out of the work group here.
Got it. And I think this, I think we should just lay out as a possible scenario that we might want to think about whether this would belong in the public safety service area or in OMF or as laid out in the resolution. I don't have a strong opinions about that right now, but just because of the strong alignment required with public safety, I think there's a, including police, I just, that's an open question in my mind, where's the right place long-term in the org chart for this team?
Great, and I think that's something that we should discuss in this work group.
I'm good. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Maps?
Yeah, I think point of order. Vicente Harrison is here, and he was part of your bio testimony. So maybe we could have him come up.
Excellent.
He came in while you were speaking.
Okay.
I was trying to be polite, not interrupt.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. Good morning, City Council, Mayor Willer. Just some brief remarks in terms of support of this resolution. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about this resolution. My name is Vicente Harrison, Health Safety Emergency Manager with the Vibrant Community Service Area. I appreciate the contributions that Park Ranger Program has made to community safety, and I'm thankful for City Council now directing attention to security for city facilities and staff. We know from listening to our frontline staff that our park team members, that security is a primary concern. Sadly, park facilities and vehicles are broken into too often, and physical safety of frontline team members is not where we want to be. With over 2,000 park staff, over 50 work locations, and hundreds of structures across the park system, park security profile is complex and needs more investment. Today, Portland Parks and Recreation invest in private security services and security infrastructure such as gates, lighting, fencing, security cameras, and other prevention and monitoring methods, but it is not enough. While the Park Ranger Program is very important for parks, rule enforcements, and education for the community in our parks and community centers, there's a need for dedicated, specially-trained security personnel, especially during overnight shifts for high-profile facilities. There is also a need for more network security infrastructure such as security alarms and cameras. As confirmed from consultation with our Police Chief Day and Deputy City Administrator Mike Myers, security work is different from public safety efforts as such, such as the Park Ranger Program, police, and other public safety investments, and deserves special attention. Portland Parks and Recreation looks forward to a citywide team to assess the current conditions and best practices to develop a plan to improve cities' and parks' security. Mayor Willer and Portland City Council, we express our gratitude again for your valued attention and consideration for this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your being here. Commissioner Maps?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank our panelists for today's presentation. And just to get a sense of the stakes here, does anyone have a rough estimate of just the property damage that the city suffers every year due to vandalism and whatnot?
I remember the last time we came from the council and you asked that question about a couple of years ago. We're at the point now where we don't have a good number to give you, but it's closely around about 1.5 to 2 million a year. And this is not just like actual, you know, like trucks and stuff like that. BES has issues with gates that are broken into, and that also causes parks, they've been dealing with a lot of also graffiti at their locations. And, you know, I don't want to speak for you, Vicente, but I know that I was also dealt with gates and stolen properties.
Yes. I mean, just briefly, in terms of one of the biggest hit sites is Delta Park in our Urban Forestry Division. We've had a tractor stolen from there that mowed down fencing and was able to break into one of our barns and tamper into many other supplies. So I mean, it's in the upwards of, you know, hundreds of thousands of impact just for our service area alone.
And I would echo that as well. Recently, just within the last month, we had a fence that was damaged through a car at one of our pump stations, and just that alone was a 15,000, uninsured. And then we constantly work with parks and the rest of the folks where locks are cut, vehicles are brought into the parks, or on our trailer property. So what I can say, within the last year and a half, we probably spent roughly half a million in hardening or fixing the damage.
Well, thank you very much. I'm disheartened to hear about all the damage, although I think each one of us oversees a bureau and gives reports about arson, break-ins, straight-up theft. Colleagues, one of my hopes is that the good work being done by this team, while it might cost some dollars eventually, I think it might actually save us some dollars in the long run. And certainly, you can't really place a value on the safety of our employees, and that is one of my top concerns. And the Infrastructure Bureau, Water, Environmental Services, PBOAT, our folks are largely public-facing, and we love to interact with the public, we love to support the public. But all the challenges that we are aware of with mental illness, just straight-up crime and whatnot places our employees in danger, and we need to do a better job in this space, which is why I'm so grateful to everyone who has worked so hard on this issue. I think at this point, literally, this conversation has been going on for a couple of years. It's great to get us to this point, and I really appreciate the staff who led the way. And thank you very much. I see Commissioner Ryan has his hand up. I see Commissioner Ryan as his hand up.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, panelists. That was a great presentation. And of course, it makes complete sense, everything you said. And you've known that for a while because there's been this working group that's been gathering. And so my, my question is, sometimes in this role, you get frustrated with plans to plan to plan. And so I realize you've been in conversations for a while, and you're at a day where we're passing a resolution, and I assume success looks like you could start to implement much of those ideas that you've been talking about for over five years. So tell me, please, that there's a lot of momentum that will come in with some crisp, concrete suggestions on what success looks like.
Absolutely. So one of the things that we didn't mention here that I know everybody's talking about physical security here, but that aligns very closely is also the technical, the securities, the Genetek system that we have. So right now, what we're trying to do is actually enterprise this out so that we upgrade our current system and that most of our bureaus are now moving to that. So we're already working together as a collaborative group. And now with this, you know, I think parks and us, we've been speaking for a few years now on how to be able to kind of work together as better partners because we're both frustrated on how things were going and hitting the same wall here and there. But now we're able to bypass, break down that wall and now actually have ways to fill gaps. For example, I'm just going to say like a warming shelter that I know parks opens up and that we have to find ways to staff. This is a great way to now be able to provide those resources that parks needs and for us to fill that gap that they need. Or when they have gaps at Ross Island, you know, where they're having security issues, before it was a struggle two, three months out to get somebody over there. Now, we, we hope that we're going to have that ability moving forward, once this goes forward, that we're going to be able to respond immediately to that call. We've done a lot of infrastructure work. That's really important. So we have actually updated our Security Operational Center so we can support this moving forward. So that's been really important. And we're, we're talking as well with possible needs from other bureaus if they need 24-hour dispatching service, we can do that as well. So there's a lot of things that we've prepared for in the last few years to make sure that we're successful in the future.
I can see the head nodding, so you're clearly aligned as a team. And so I think we're acknowledging the opportunity for you to have the authority to move forward on this work. So thank you.
Perfect. Very good. Commissioner Ryan, public testimony.
No one signed up.
All right. Very good. This is a resolution. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Yeah, this is wonderful. It's all about alignment and efficiency, and thank you for all the groundwork that you've been doing. I just wanted to make sure you could lift that up so we do that we have that momentum to actually see the concrete results of this in, in a short period of time. So I'm excited to vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Very, very important step forward to protect our people, our property and protect the city as a whole. I vote aye.
Maps.
Again, I want to thank staff for their important work on this. I know these conversations have gone on for a couple of years at this point. For those folks who are thinking about running for council or serving in these seats in the future, I'll tell you, when I got to this job, one of my first real surprises was, I'm sure the first day when I talked to staff, one of the first things that kind of, kind of came up was concern about, around security. This is a hidden or a hidden issue, but it's an incredibly important issue. The work that you folks are doing here is of utmost importance to me, and I think it's of utmost importance to our city, both in terms of protecting our assets and protecting our people, which is why I am glad to vote aye.
Rubio.
I just want to thank you all for the presentation. I'm really impressed with the thinking and the alignment here and really looking forward to seeing this work move forward, and thank you for all you do. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I want to thank Chief Administrative Officer Mike Jordan, as well as OMF Security Manager Manny Brer. Thank you. And I want to thank all of our security team, and I'm glad that we're finally at this step where we are going to expand and coordinate enterprise-wide. Security plays a very important role. The vast majority of days, the vast majority of interactions we have as the city are very positive. Our employees with the public, our city commissioners and their staffs with the public usually goes really well. But when it doesn't go well, it goes well very badly in the worst kind of scenarios. You know, Hector sitting at the back there, I, I remember once he was physically assaulted when he was trying to protect the city council, just doing their job of being the city council. And Hector, I always appreciate you and, and your leadership during the worst part of the riots. I remember that, well, I can just say point-blank, that a number of members of the security team probably saved my life. And we see that same kind of violence that put upon our own city employees because frankly, right now, there, there is a bit of a culture of anti-local government spreading across the United States. And our employees have a right to work in an environment where they feel safe, where they feel secure, and that their security needs are met. And frankly, so too does the public. We have people sitting in here today in our, our council chamber who have a right to come and speak and petition to their government, and they should be able to do so freely and without concerning themselves about their personal security. And we, we have our great security teams here as well. So I just think it's a great step in the right direction. I really appreciate it. Thanks for your leadership. We're here to help. If there's more that we can do, we obviously want to help you with it. I vote aye. The resolution is adopted. I am told, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I am told that item 334, we now have everybody here, so let's go back to item 334. Colleagues, this is the proclamation declaring April 21st to 27th, 2024 to be National Volunteer Week. And I will turn it right over to Commissioner, where were we? Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, 333 and 334. It's time to do redo this, right?
Yeah, let's do 334 first because I've received notification that everybody's here for 334.
Okay, great. Colleagues, as we gather here today, I'm just honored to celebrate National Volunteer Week, and you were so busy out there doing your work that we had to pause for a minute so you could get here and be present with us today. And we unexpectedly were, were, were early as well, so thanks. And it's time that we can just collectively pause or recognize and celebrate the extraordinary contributions of volunteers who dictate their time, their talents and passion to the city of Portland. Throughout the year, volunteers from a very diverse community embody the spirit of compassion and service, enriching the city's core values and embodying what it means to be a Portlander. Whether you are mentoring a youth, feeding the hungry, serving on advisory board, caring for our environment, saving lives during extreme weather, volunteers play an indispensable role in shaping our community. Here's a few stats some volunteers can do, just a few. There's 2,000 volunteers worked as a part of the National Emergency Teams Program. 4,600 volunteers joined the Bureau of Planning, Sustainability and Solve through more than 127,000 pounds of trash from our parks, neighborhoods, business districts and natural areas. And more than 150 professionals and student volunteers support homeowners earning low incomes in the Bureau of Development Services Empowered Neighborhood Program. As we continue to reflect on volunteers and how they've touched our lives and transformed our city for the better, let's take a moment to express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for their efforts. It's now my honor to introduce the main presenter, Sonia Shemansky. Come up to the dais, please. She is the new Deputy City Administrator for Vibrant Communities Service Area, and she will speak about the direct volunteerism in our parks, in arts and children's services. Simply put, vibrant communities especially could not exist without the incredible support of volunteers. Good to see you, Sonia.
Good to see you. Take two. Thank you for your patience.
You're worth the wait.
And, and for hosting us this morning, I know you have a very heavy policy agenda this week, so taking this time to acknowledge and celebrate the impact of our volunteers is extra special. I am Sonia Shemansky. I am your newly-minted interim Deputy City Administrator for the Vibrant Communities Service Area, and I'm so delighted to be with you, esteemed and distinguished members of the city council, to celebrate our volunteers today, most especially from our service area, which includes the Office of Arts and Culture, Portland Children's Levy and Portland Parks and Recreation, but also those volunteers who support programs and services citywide. Commissioner mentioned a few. In our service area, we recruit, support and partner with thousands of volunteers who contribute over 360 service hours annually, which is almost 1,000 hours every day. These contributions stretch our public investments even further, bring joy and wellness to community members and visitors to Portland, and support our community to be its best. It takes intention, focus and strong partners to support this community of volunteers, and we are very grateful for our partnership with the Portland Parks Foundation. Through this public-private partnership, which is one of many that we're proud to be part of, the foundation cultivates park boosters and volunteers through awards, celebrations, small grants and workshops. Commissioner and I visited them Monday, and they are going strong and excited for the summer. What do these volunteers do? They offer us their advice and perspective on boards, they roll up their sleeves to clean up shared community spaces, and they help local kids and families connect with our programs and each other. They are amphibian monitors, coaches, advisory board members, invasive species eradicators and special event assistants, and I think they should all have T-shirts that say those things. So I'm going to share a very little bit about how our service area connects with volunteers. We'll hear from a few of these special folks, and then we'll turn it back to you. First, the 13-member Community Council, which advises Portland Children's Levy's staff and the Levy's Allocation Committee about policy development and implementation throughout our grant-making cycle. This council directs broad community engagement efforts, co-designs the funding process and recommends programs for funding. Last fiscal year, nearly 10,000 local kids were served by Levy-funded services like mentoring and after-school programs, and over 15,000 were served by Levy-funded hunger relief programs. Here today, from the Community Council, and they're back there, please raise your hands, are Alex Sanchez, Amorachi Duru and Jacobson Valentine. There you are. Next, the Office of Arts and Culture celebrates the dynamic contributions of the Arts Education and Access Fund Oversight Committee, whose 13 diverse and passionate volunteer members review fund expenditures, progress and outcomes. The committee partners with the Commissioner of Culture and Livability, the Office of Arts and Culture, the City of Portland's Revenue Division, the Regional Arts and Culture Council and Portland Area Public Schools to support local arts teachers and organizations. We have at least one member of that committee online, and, and I don't pretend a lot of people watch these sessions, but there may be more. So if you're watching, thank you for your service. Last, our largest and longest-standing volunteer program by a lot is in Portland Parks and Recreation. Under the leadership of Director Adina Long and Superstar Program Manager Steve Pixley, please raise your hand. Steve didn't want to be recognized, but more than deserves it. The program has grown from 270 annual volunteer hours in 2019 to over 350,000 today. A lot has happened between 2019 and today, so that expansion over that time period is impressive. Each year, more than 15,000 people contribute their time, either on their own or through a business, school, faith group or community organization to our park system. And I'm very happy to share today that business volunteerism is nearly back to pre-pandemic levels. In 2023, the National Trust for Public Land ranked Portland a top 10 park system nationwide, which would not have been possible without the enormous contributions of these volunteers. We are very grateful for the young children, families and inspiring older adults who help our system shine. I learned this morning when I was asking for fun facts, we have at least one volunteer who's 90-plus years old, I don't know how many years in the system, and we have a 35-year and running volunteer at the Washington Park Rose Garden, who is the only volunteer allowed to work on the roses because they are precious and we don't put them in anybody's hands. Next, we'll hear from a few volunteers who I will briefly introduce and then invite up, and then we'll turn it back over to you all for the proclamation. Actually, come on up, come on up now. We'll introduce you along the way. First, we have Golden Ball Youth Coach Mario Díazso. Last year, 350, thank you, volunteer coaches, including Mario, led our Golden Ball Youth Basketball and Youth Volleyball Leagues. Mario and our other coaches teach our players teamwork and fair play and give them the confidence to tackle challenges on the court and in their lives. Thank you. Next, we have litter pickup team organizer, Lorene O'Brien. We are very lucky, as the commissioner mentioned, and as you might have seen earlier this week, I think outside City Hall, residents helping keep our parks and our neighborhoods clean and welcoming. At parks, we work with groups like Solve One Block at a Time and the St. John's Litter Busters. Since 2022, Lorene has organized monthly litter pickups through the North Park blocks, and in about 900 hours of service, Lorene and team have collected 2.6 tons of trash. Finally, we have stewardship volunteer, Robin Jensen. Robin is president of the Friends of Markham Nature Park, leading conservation projects and engaging community members to be excited about park upkeep. Just last year, volunteers like Robin contributed more than 80,000 volunteer hours to nurture Portland's natural areas and parks. And before we go to them, a very quick note about a partner who isn't here today, Jan Campbell. You may know Jan as a leading voice for accessibility in Portland. Since the 90s, as an employee and now a volunteer, Jan has reviewed special event permit applications for our customer service center, using her experience and expertise to look at plans with an eye toward accessibility. Her constructive feedback and guidance empower event organizers to create welcoming spaces for all. Naturally, Jan couldn't be here today because she's helping others learn about accessibility at a conference, which is a valuable use of time. So Mario, Lorene and Robin, please share briefly your experience volunteering and supporting our system in these ways, in any order you like. Talk down there.
Want to start with me? Thank you, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners for recognizing the work of volunteers today. When I started volunteering on the Board of Friends of Markham Nature Park over 31 years ago, I was mentored and inspired by a group of people who are among the founders of Markham Nature Park, including Barbara Walker, Dan Goldie, Najah Monk and Dorothy Westrack. It was because of their dedication and generosity of time as volunteers that Markham Nature Park came to exist. In part, I volunteered to carry on their legacy. The main reason that I continue to volunteer in Markham and Forest Park is because I love the forest. I know that the value of urban, I know about the value of urban natural areas as places that support biodiversity of plants and animals, as producers of oxygen, as carbon storage banks, as places that lessen the effects of climate change, as well as beautiful places for respite and recreation for humans. I benefit from parks and believe it's my civic duty to give back in some way to them and to my community. I also volunteer as a neighborhood emergency team member. Over the years, I've worked with amazing Portland Park staff like Ahmed Youssef, Kendra Peterson-Morgan, Annie O'Shea and Monica Heschelies, and many others who care so much and do an outstanding job of maintaining our parks with limited resources. I recognize that they can't do so without the help of volunteers. My stewardship of Markham Park over the years has given me a sense of belonging and ownership and the knowledge and satisfaction that I've contributed to its well-being and its health. We all benefit from parks. We can all support parks by continuing to fund staff, volunteers and the resources to keep the Portland Park System one of the best in the nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the, the ability to be here today. I'm humbled and honored to be here to talk a little bit about volunteering. As a Golden Ball basketball coach, I love basketball, I love working with kids. I feel I've had a great opportunity to do both of those things, not only coaching my own daughter, Neva, and my son, Marco, but also their friends within the Southeast community. More than that, Golden Ball has given us a chance to meet and connect with families and kids all over the city, not just in our inner Southeast community, but all over the greater Portland metro area. I feel very blessed, fortunate and grateful to have the opportunity, particularly coming out of the pandemic, to reconnect with families, to get some active, physical and emotional well-being boost for just being together and to learn the game of basketball. I have a, a lot of thanks to my wife, who has put up with hours of coaching and organization beyond our family commitments and jobs. I really thank the, the parents and families, particularly- I really thank the parents and families, particularly in the Woodstock Elementary Neighborhood. And I also want to thank particularly the good people at Portland Parks and Rec, most especially Jennifer Roundsville and Blaine Rathmire, who have taken many calls from me with questions and have always been supportive and facilitated use of gym time, flexibility in scheduling, all in the name of supporting kids in our community. I'm very grateful to be here today, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lorene O'Brien, thank you for having us today. I started into volunteering, doing the cleanup kind of volunteering, after I retired. Like many people that retire young, they have a lot of energy, a lot of things to do. I looked at the problems that we were having in Portland. Portland's my home, I've been here a long-term resident, almost 30 years, raised my kids here. And so I started with Adopt One Block and was cleaning our block. I don't live in an area that has a lot of trash, so it wasn't real fulfilling, but it was a little bit. And then I started doing One Block on the North Park blocks, so I go there every week and I clean up that block. And then I started thinking, if you have more hands, you can get a lot more done. So I started inviting a group of retired executives from the healthcare industry that I had worked with for years, and, but, you know, a lot of us travel and aren't there every week, so then we made it a public event, and we have 25 people there today cleaning the park, and it's really rewarding work, and it's, you know, I looked at the homeless problem and the mental health and addictions problem, and I'm on the board of a mental health addictions not-for-profit. But those are big, hard problems to tackle. Cleaning up is really not, and it's a community thing, it's a community builder, and it inspires people to, you spend a couple hours and the park looks so much better after you have 25 people cleaning it up. So if I could think of one thing that you all could do to help, is I worry that this is not sustainable, that we need to go back to anti-trash, anti-litter campaigns, and some of us of a certain age all remember the "every litter bit hurts," or, you know, "give a hoot, don't pollute." And I think there's been a generation that has missed that or something, so if there's anything that the city council could do, it was, it's, how do we, how do we have an ad campaign that makes people inspired and proud to be part of this community? So thank you.
Thank you. Steve was telling me this morning how many fresh new ideas we get from our volunteers and how exciting it is to have that dialogue. I'm happy too, or I'm happy for you two, Commissioner, and Commissioner Mapps. I think I'm turning it over to Nick Bradnicki from the Rose Festival, is that correct?
Yes, oh, there we go, good. Come on up, Nick. Colleagues, I have some invited testimony today, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Ryan and the mayor for allowing me to do this. I want to bring up Nick from the Rose Festival, and I'll tell you why. Today, we are, I believe, exactly 30 days away from the start of the Rose Festival. It's an important civic event. It's also very complicated, as we all know, to organize. The Rose Festival relies heavily on volunteers, and so I thought this would be a great opportunity for Nick and our Rose Festival family to talk about the great work they do, and I would not be shy about putting out a plea for volunteers if you need volunteers.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Mapps. Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak. Nick Bradnicki, Chief Operating Officer of the Portland Rose Festival Foundation, as it was mentioned, and I think, when I think about volunteers, I just really think about the heart of Portland, you know, what Portland loves, support, creating opportunity, delivering on that opportunity creation, and, well, we know there's over 25,000 nonprofits in the state, a lot of those exist within Portland, and the Portland Rose Festival has the distinct honor of celebrating a, not a majority of 25,000, that's a little bit, you know, that's a little bit much, but a good number of those 25,000, many hundreds every year, those community cultural and affinity organizations, it's a distinct pleasure for us, and we get to do that primarily through our parades. We only have eight full-time year-round staff, if you could believe that, quite a sizable board, and we appreciate them, and thousands of volunteers that help us celebrate, just as we're hearing within parks and other organizations, you know, celebrate and create that opportunity for everybody else to engage and enjoy themselves. And if I think, along with a call for action, Commissioner Mapps, what I want to impress on everyone is that the Portland Rose Festival, we love Portland, the good, the bad, because we can change what we might consider bad, and what's to come. We have so much love for the thousands of volunteer hours and the thousands upon thousands of volunteers that dedicate their time, energy, and service to everything this city needs. There's only so many Commissioners, I know there's going to be a few more in the future, but there's only so many of you, and besides your staffs and everybody within city government, there's also the hours that all of those members of your teams then give, and then members of our community give to you in certain ways, to the bureaus in certain ways. So the Rose Festival appreciates the privilege of celebrating what's good about Portland right now, what's beautiful, what's diverse, what's vibrant, despite what some others might have to say about our fabulous city. We were, after all, created to put Portland on the map, and we appreciate that privilege and the designation of being the city's official festival. So as we celebrate all of the good that the festival has to offer this year, and celebrate all those organizations, all of those folks who volunteer, we also call on those around the city who have just maybe a little bit of time left in the coming month to keep delivering, keep delivering on that volunteerism, that thing that creates all the opportunities for everybody else, because we need you so that we can celebrate everybody else. So we appreciate the opportunity to speak, the festival appreciates everything that you do for us throughout the year, and as we celebrate over three weeks, starting on May 24th, and we welcome anyone who's interested in helping us celebrate Portland to visit us online, rosefestival.org, and we'll get you connected.
Thanks, Nick. Before you go, I have a couple of questions. Is the Rose Festival still looking for volunteers?
Absolutely.
Okay, so just to be clear, if you wanted to volunteer for the Rose Festival, how would I do that?
To volunteer for the Rose Festival, you would visit rosefestival.org/volunteer.
Great.
And we will get you connected.
Awesome. And what kind of activity, if, let's say, I got some free time in the next month or so, love the Rose Festival, would love to be part of it, what are you looking for volunteers for? What kind of things would you put me to work doing?
Well, the easiest and lowest barrier is being a part of managing a barrier during a parade during the festival itself. We also need folks who like to stretch their artistic and creative skills with decorating our floats.
So your options here include, I mean, I'll just point out, folks, I've had the great privilege of participating and helping support the Rose Festival for a couple of years, and this is a remarkable experience. If you've never done it before, I'd encourage you to do it. If you've got young kids, you have an opportunity to get them involved in actually decorating the floats, which is like gluing flowers and seeds and whatnot on the floats, that's amazing. So I encourage you to think about doing that. You also have an opportunity to help organize the parades, which is just a classic Portland event, an event going on for more than 100 years, I believe, at this point.
117.
117, so literally one of our oldest civic traditions, and I'll be explicit about why I invited the Rose Festival here today. For those of you who have been in the building for a while and have been through a couple of Rose Festivals, you know that in about two weeks, panicked, please, we'll start to go out through City Hall and frankly, through the community, as we need more folks to help pull together these events. This is a great time to sign up. Go to rosefestival.org, there's a banner at the top of the website, hit the volunteer place. I also wanted to commend these guys too, because your webpage and trips of volunteering and kind of plugging people in is exceptional. I think the city can learn a lot from what you're doing in this space, and I very much appreciate you being here today.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Yeah, any proclamation, Mayor?
I actually have a couple of comments I'd like, that was, those were informal comments, I do have some formal comments which I'd like to deliver. And let me just start out by thanking everyone who sponsored this particular measure, which would include the mayor and Commissioner Ryan. I want to thank staff and the members of the community who came to talk about their good works that are here today. And I'd also like to talk a little bit about the umbrella that God has here, National Volunteer Week. We didn't talk too much about where that came from and what it means. You know, National Volunteer Week is an annual celebration that promotes and celebrates volunteers and volunteering. National Volunteer Week was first established via Presidential Proclamation in 1974, which means that this year, we are celebrating the 50th anniversary of National Volunteer Week. During this week, we recognize and thank volunteers who lend their time and talents to meeting our community needs. That's why I'd like to take a moment to thank the thousands of Portlanders who volunteer their time to making our city an even better place. And this really resonates to me as a member of council, because as we heard today, there are hundreds, perhaps even thousands, of Portlanders who volunteer to serve on advisory boards and in other capacities to support the work that we do here in City Hall, in our various City Hall annexes. To give you a sense of the scope of that, I will tell you, I'm your Infrastructure Commissioner, and in my portfolio, which includes water, environmental services, and P-Bot, I have more than 17 volunteer-led advisory committees who help P-Bot and Water and Environmental Services serve our city better. And again, I know I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but volunteers are important, it's literally how we go about making our city run. So I'm going to take this moment again to reiterate my plea for Rose Festival volunteers. The Rose Festival will begin in exactly one month. The Rose Festival rolls out on May 24th, runs through June 8th. As we all know, the Rose Festival is a beloved Portland tradition. For those of you who have been involved in the Rose Festival, you will also know that organizing the Rose Festival is complicated, and frankly, pulling the Rose Festival together is a minor miracle, and volunteers are the magic that make that miracle possible. If you want to learn more about volunteering for the Rose Festival, I encourage you to go to their website, which is rosefestival.org, click the volunteer button at the top of that page, and you can get involved in great things like helping decorate some of the floats, helping manage the parades. We really can't pull events like that off without you and our volunteers, which is why I'm really delighted to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you to Commissioner Ryan and Mayor Wheeler for bringing this proclamation forward. As the Commissioner in charge of the Bureau of Emergency Management, that opportunity has allowed me to see the great work that a large group of volunteers do to make the city resilient and strong. Neighborhood emergency teams have volunteered 25,938 volunteer hours just this year so far, all around the city. These dedicated volunteers have been deployed from over 36 events, including the Fentanyl emergency, the Kmart fire, and all the severe weather sheltering situations. Volunteers help make Portland work, and they are a central part of building and providing the social fabric. But volunteering also is a step towards self-actualization. The great management writer Peter Druckard once said, "There's no better way to understand your strengths and discover where you belong than to volunteer." I've been personally engaged as a volunteer during my entire adult life in Portland, first providing young adults of all walks of life a place to play high-level amateur soccer in their 20s, later introducing soccer to kindergarteners, boys and girls in the city of Portland, all in Portland Parks. It was an immense pleasure to support young people in the community, but honestly, it was also a remarkable opportunity to build skills, to understand my own strengths and weaknesses. And so I would encourage Portlanders to listen, to continue to volunteer, consider the Rose Festival, we need your help, and very happy to express my gratitude and join this council in celebrating the dedication and commitment of those who volunteer throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else having comments?
I was just going to say, and I'll just add, everything's been said, but I just want to just appreciate all the volunteers. It's definitely what gives City of Portland the flavor that we have as a very community-forward city, and just appreciate so much what you do, and I'm a volunteer myself as well, and it definitely, not only provides increased quality of life for the community, it also helps us as a person who's volunteering, because we feel more connected to our community. So thank you again.
Very good. I have a comment as well. First of all, I want to thank volunteers. They are underappreciated, underthanked for the work that they do in our community. In fact, our current city government, as well as our future city government, depends heavily upon volunteers. And in fact, we heard a number of volunteers stepping forward this morning to serve on one of our many, many volunteer committees. As we mark National Volunteer Week, we honor the selfless individuals who dedicate their time and their energy to enrich our community. Their efforts span from maintaining our outdoor spaces, as we heard, to advancing arts education and shaping equitable programs for our children through the great work of the Portland Children's Levy. These volunteers do more than just perform tasks, they forge connections and strengthen the fabric of our community. They make it a community. Their commitment helps sustains Portland's green spaces, empowers our youths, it supports families, and it makes our community more inclusive and more resilient. So we officially honor National Volunteer Week. Let us recognize and thank the many, many people who take the time to better our community. Thank you to all of our volunteers for your dedication, your work is critical. And now I will pass it to Commissioner Ryan, who will read the proclamation, except for the last paragraph, I guess.
Yeah, oh, thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Just a couple remarks, and I'll pass it actually to Sonia.
Sonia, great, thank you.
First of all, thank you, Sonia, for representing Parks, Arts, and the Children's Levy. I see members of the Children's Levy, Lisa Pellegrino, wave your hand, Darian Jones, I see you. I don't know who else is out there, it's hard to see, but I want to thank you all for being here today, and obviously, a big, robust group from Parks. I have to say, the volunteers who spoke, Robin, Mario, and Lauren, you're contagious. Who wouldn't want to hang out with the three of you and be a volunteer? So nothing, that's the best way to sell it, is just to be yourself. And I really liked the story of, in your next chapter of service as a retired person, getting your friends to help out doing some public health work, of course, and serving our city. And thanks for also acknowledging the complexity, that's just like an outcome of the public health crisis we're in, and I really thought it was elegant the way that you explained that, I appreciate that so much. And Nick and Commissioner Mapps, if you haven't looked at your calendar to see if you have some time in May or June to help our city shine during our big festival that makes us feel like a small town for a week or two, please get out there and have some fun with other Portlanders. On that note, a special shout-out also to Ocean Eli in Civic Light. A lot of people don't know this, but Ocean in Civic Light manages all of the appointments for all of the commissions and committees throughout the city, so I just wanted to give an acknowledgement of their steadfast work. All the volunteers have figured out the secret to fulfilling civic engagement, basically fulfilling life. We know that when you give, you definitely receive more in return, and you leave with pride in your work and improve, whether it's approving a patch of ground, mentoring another youth, or gathering fellow volunteers to make the city a better place. My plea is just find yourself on the map and go serve, you'll have a better life. It's now time to turn this over to you, Sonia, to read the proclamation.
Well, my pleasure, especially on the 50th anniversary of the week, and I've counted about 400,000 hours of service citywide. Just in these comments, I'm going to see if I can chase down a citywide number, because I suspect it's much, much bigger. So here we go, and then back to you at the end, Mayor, for the official part. Whereas, April 21 through 27 is National Volunteer Week, which provides an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the efforts of volunteers across the city, recognizing the power of volunteerism in addressing local needs, promoting civic involvement, and fostering a sense of belonging and connection within our diverse communities. And whereas, the City of Portland acknowledges and appreciates thousands of Portlanders who partner with city service areas, making countless contributions to enrich the lives of others and themselves by building relationships, sharing their time and skills to improve the well-being of our city. And whereas, the City of Portland's vibrant community service area, including Portland Parks and Recreation, Portland Children's Levy, and the Office of Arts and Culture, is a leader in promoting volunteers to stretch city services, connecting us with new communities, and sharing their passion with friends and neighbors alike. And whereas, last year, Portland Parks and Recreation volunteers helped protect and nurture healthy ecosystems by removing 744,969 square feet of invasive weeds, maintaining 7.1 miles of trails, and planting 23,256 native plants and trees to ensure resilient natural areas in our changing climate. And whereas... And whereas, seven hundred young athletes learned teamwork, fair play, and that adults really do care about them, from Portland Parks and Recreation volunteer youth basketball and volleyball coaches. And whereas, the Arts Education and Access Fund Oversight Committee, a team of community council volunteers, play a pivotal role in shaping the artistic and cultural fabric of Portland's youth. And whereas, through that committee's diligent oversight of the Arts Education and Access Fund, they ensure that every elementary school in the city's six districts has the opportunity to enrich students' lives with dedicated arts education, fostering a future where every child, regardless of race, ability, or gender, can access and enjoy the transformative power of the arts. And whereas, community council volunteers for the Portland Children's Levy improve the lives of children and families by co-creating equitable and community-driven funding priorities and processes. And whereas, council members lay the foundation for a future in which race, ability, or gender, and other identities do not determine the future of Portland's children. And whereas, volunteers seek to reduce isolation and improve mental health by fostering a shared sense of purpose and belonging in our community through volunteering that beautifies and enhances our shared environment, learn new skills together, and connect community members with opportunities to help them succeed. And whereas, the City of Portland encourages residents, businesses, nonprofit organizations, and government agencies to engage in volunteer activities, recognizing that collective action and collaboration are essential for building a more equitable, inclusive, and compassionate community.
Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim April twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, to be National Volunteer Week in Portland, and call upon all residents to honor and thank the volunteers whose dedication strengthens our community's connections. Let us recognize their efforts, express our gratitude, and commit ourselves to fostering a culture of service and volunteerism throughout the entire year.
Here, here. Thank you.
Could all the volunteers please stand up? Please stand up, all the volunteers in the audience. Please stand up.
Have them come forward and do a picture with all of us? Ryan wonders if we could just move over here and have a photo, quick photo. Volunteers? And the staff that work with the volunteers? It's gonna be a big group. If you can start, I'll be back.
Okay.
All right, we will go back to item number three-three-three, a proclamation, and we'll go ahead and just start it all over. Kealan, if you could read it, please.
Sure. Proclamation in memory of Latin American artist Gerardo Calderon.
Colleagues, today's proclamation comes from the community organization Friends of Gerardo Calderon, an esteemed member of our community whose creative contributions have left a lasting impact, both on our city and indeed, the entirety of Oregon as a whole. I'll now turn it over to Commissioners Ryan and Rubio, who are co-sponsoring this proclamation with me for their opening remarks. We'll start with Commissioner Ryan again, then we'll go to Commissioner Rubio.
Well, I'm so glad we get to do this over. Thank you, Mayor. It's so great to have you all here. It just wasn't making sense earlier. So this is a really special day, and I'm so proud to honor Gerardo Calderon. As Arts Commissioner, I'm especially appreciative of the link that I witnessed in his life between arts and education, and that he demonstrated that his entire life, much like one of our current creative laureates, Jason Margolis, who works as a music teacher at Roosevelt High School. Gerardo recognized the connection and the dedication of life in arts, music, and education. From preschool kids to young college students, he was able to mentor and share his gifts through education, providing many, many Oregonians beyond with an opportunity to learn, play, and share culture and community for generations to come. A strong community presence here today is a statement. Gerardo's contributions as a cherished Latin American and Oregonian artist, his spirit will forever be woven into the cultural fabric of Portland. Thank you all for being here today. I look forward to hearing your comments.
Thank you.
And to you, Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's my absolutely deepest honor to recognize musician, community leader, and arts activista Gerardo Calderon. I had the privilege of knowing Gerardo over the years and saw firsthand how he touched the lives of so many people, from his friends and his family, to all of us who are honored to share space with him. And I'm so glad that we're honoring him today. And for those of us who knew Gerardo, we remember the vibrancy, the realness, and the just sheer love of music and culture that he radiated, and how much he revelled in sharing the Mexican and Latin American culture with all those who came into his energy. And over the decades of his life in Portland, he shaped Latina arts and culture through his music, mentorship of other musicians, and a deep love for his culture and community. So today, we'll hear from some folks who knew Gerardo and who shared his love for arts and culture, and who want to share a few words about his legacy. So I'm pleased to introduce Helen Daltozo from the Regional Arts and Culture Council, Matias Trejo de Dios from the Instituto, the Culture Institute? I'll just leave it there. Rosa Floyd, who is Oregon's Teacher of the Year, and Joaquin Lopez, Community Arts Leader and Artist, and one of our city's creative laureates. So I will turn it over to you.
Well, we're so excited to be here, and it's a very special day. Thank you so much for your time. And I think we'll begin with a good friend, Helen Daltozo.
Thank you, Joaquin. Thank you very much for having me here today. My name is Helen Daltozo, and it's my honor to have been asked by Joaquin to speak on behalf of the rich and diverse legacy of one of our region's most significant culture keepers, Gerardo Calderon. A culture keeper is an artist who actively practices, passes on, and preserves the living traditions of the cultural community to which they belong and is recognized by that community. When I first joined the team at the Regional Arts and Culture Council in the late nineties, this was how I was introduced to Gerardo and his music. He was one of a growing number of artists of exceptional skill and talent from around the globe who were choosing to live here and share their art and cultural traditions in their new home. Gerardo's ensemble, Grupo Condoror, performed and taught through RAC's Neighborhood Arts Program and the Oregon Historical Society's Oregon Folklife Program. Gerardo and the musical traditions of Mexico and Latin America he presented were in demand in libraries, healthcare settings, human and social service agencies, nursing homes, schools, and festivals. When audiences heard Gerardo's music, it was an invitation to explore another world. Gerardo's relationship with me and with RAC was deep and enduring, from performing in our workplace giving campaigns to teaching in our highly-regarded Right Brain Initiative, a school-based program through his work with young audiences, now Arts for Learning Northwest. Gerardo was both a grant recipient and a panelist, as well as being a collaborator in more publicly-supported projects than I can count. It is not uncommon for me to attend events or performances and discover that Gerardo was part of the program. It didn't matter if he was in the background or center stage playing his guitar or one of his many traditional instruments, because his music made you listen. His music had an impact. During the pandemic, Third Angle New Music Ensemble, in a project supported by your own Portland Parks and Rec, invited only a dozen musicians to create sound walks throughout Portland. Gerardo was one of them. If you have an opportunity to treat yourself to a visit to Wabato Farms on Saudi Island, and you pair the experience with your earbuds, you will explore the surroundings while listening to Gerardo's composition. It is as fine as an example as you will find of his ability to innovate, document, preserve, and celebrate the diversity of our living cultural heritage. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Helen. Our next speaker is Matias Trejo de Dios from Instituto de Cultura Oregoniana. And Council Clerk should have the video. Thank you so much, Council Clerk. Thank you, Matias Trejo de Dios. And I'd like to give it over to Rosa Floyd, Oregon's Teacher of the Year, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you very much, and it's an honor to be here. My name is Rosa Floyd, a two thousand twenty-three Oregon Teacher of the Year. It's an honor. It's an honor, my big responsibility. And in that place, I had the opportunity to share many, many performances and working with students with Gerardo. And this is the reason my presence today is to share my testimony and recognize Maestro Calderon for his legacy on generations of children and young people, the perpetuate by the impact he had and had on their lives and their recognition and the cultural roots. He always recognized the diversity and richness that each person brings to society. He was always concerned about creating spaces of belonging and equity for children and young people. Through his music and art, he managed to influence hundreds of students. I personally had the opportunity to be a participant of this important and beautiful work. Teacher Calderon's legacy will continue to be present, creating ripple effects inside and outside the classroom, extending the education of students in different communities, promoting unity through art and culture, and not only for students, but everyone else. Including cultural significant content into lesson plans is one method that educators can be an impact on their students' cultural awareness. Teachers can aid children in gaining a deeper appreciation for variety of teaching them about the history, costumes, values of many cultures and their own. And this is precisely what Mr. Calderon practiced during his life as a teacher, working with children and young people in different communities in Oregon. I thank the city council for allowing me this work and considering the proclamation in his honor. We will continue his example and legacy to educate, inspire, promote art culture to our new generations of students and our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosa. Dear Mayor Ted Wheeler and members of the Portland City Council, it's good to see you again. My name is Joaquin Lopez, and I serve as one of your creative laureates to this beautiful city. Thank you for your time today as we honor the accomplishments and contributions of our friend and artist Gerardo Calderon. He left our realm on January twenty-first, twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. My love and warmth go out to his family, who have lost a beloved member of their kin. May his spirit continue to live on in their memory and hearts. Gerardo's impact for the arts in Portland is immense. There are simply too many things to say. I met Gerardo about fifteen years ago. He was the coolest, most talented Latin American artist I knew. I thought to myself, oh, he would never work with me. He's simply too good. And I was wrong. At last, we collaborated on my project for Portland Latino Gay Pride called Vos Alta. This project celebrates the lives and contributions of our Latino gay community through stories performed by actors and musicians. Gerardo gave his heart to Vos Alta. To be held by a master musician from Mexico to tell a Latino gay story is the most healing experience you can imagine. Music doesn't discriminate. A particular song can be heard by the biggest bigot or the most loving saint, and it is still the same song. This is why music is liberation. With Gerardo's talent, Vos Alta was able to score Latino gay lives with Mexican rancheras, Latin American boleros, pop, and indigenous sounds and songs to tell our stories, because our gay stories also belong to the human experience. Gerardo's life is a testament to the fact that we are the monuments today for tomorrow. We are the people who walk these sidewalks, building a culture of collaboration, understanding, and strength for generations to come. May we follow in Gerardo's footsteps and continue to build our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think it's time now to read the proclamation. So I will start.
Before that, why don't we do council comments?
Oh, right.
We'll start with Commissioner Mapps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start out by thanking our panelists for today's presentation. And colleagues, I also want to share this. Like all of you and many Portlanders, I was saddened to hear of the passing of Gerardo Calderon. But I'm glad we're taking this moment to celebrate his life. As we have heard, on January twenty-first of this year, Mr. Calderon passed away in Mexico with his family by his side. Mr. Calderon was a musician, a composer, a teacher, a producer, and a craftsman. He was a student of and advocate for traditional Mexican music, Latin American folk music, and pre-Columbian music. Now, even if you don't recognize Mr. Calderon's name, there's a good chance he touched your life. For example, for many years, Calderon was a musician in residence at the Portland International Airport. So if you ever noticed a musician playing as you were scurrying to your gate, a good chance it could have been him. And he also taught at Grace Arts Camp. So if you are like me, and when your kids were little and you sent them to Grace Arts Camp for their summer program, there is a good chance Mr. Calderon was one of your kids' music teachers. And if you only had passing interactions with Mr. Calderon, you may not have realized how accomplished he was. As we have heard today, Mr. Calderon composed music and designed sound. But he was also designed to sound and compose music for ballet companies, documentaries, short films, commercials, theater companies, and cultural organizations. He played many instruments, including string instruments, wind instruments, and percussion instruments. He performed with musical ensembles in Mexico, and Canada, and New England, and here in the Pacific Northwest. He was also a craftsperson who built instruments, including pan flutes, rainsticks, water drums, turtle boxes, and bass drums. And he was also a kind and generous man who brought his mischievous smile and love for life to every. who brought his mischievous smile and love for life to every interaction. On behalf of this council and the city of Portland, I'd like to express my deep gratitude to Mr. Calderón for all that he shared with our community. And I would like to share my deepest sympathies to all of Mr. Calderón's friends and family. And I would like to close by letting Portlanders know that a memorial ceremony in Mr. Calderón's honor will be held on Sunday, June 28th, at 11:00 a.m. at Teatro Milagro at 525 Southeast Stark. All are welcome to attend. Thank you very much, and I'll hand it to my colleagues.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
It is my delight to be part of the proclamation of the legacy of Gerardo Calderón. His contributions to music arts and education have deeply touched our community, and we are immensely proud to celebrate. His devoted contributions is a valued Latino artist. Calderón's music is a perfect example of how music is a universal language. Gerardo used this language to transcend borders and unite people from all walks of life. We are fortunate to have been touched by all that he did in our community. We hope his legacy will continue inspiring future generations. Celebremos juntos su legado. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Sure. Thank you so much, Commissioner Rubio and Arts Laureate Joaquin Lopez for bringing this forward. It was such a beautiful presentation. All of your words were special, and it was just a delight to sit here and get to know him better. And I know his spirits in the room. And so this is a lovely moment in time, and I really like how you summed it up at the end. It sounds like experiencing his life. You get to say something very true and positive, which is music is liberation. And so I'm delighted to be here today and be a part of this presentation. Thanks so much.
Very good. I've got a couple of comments as well. This morning, we recognize a figure whose artistic contributions have not only enriched our cultural landscape but have also significantly shaped the identity of our city. We acknowledge the remarkable achievements of the late Gerardo Calderón. A native of Mexico and a proud Oregonian, Gerardo was a luminary in our artistic community, a composer, a music director, multi-instrumentalist, and much, much more, as you've heard. His dedication to the arts was paralleled only by his commitment to education and community engagement. Gerardo's work with Grupo Condor, Nuestro Canto, and other cultural organizations exemplified his passion for preserving and celebrating Latin American arts. Through his 30 years as a teaching artist, Gerardo shared a rich tapestry of pre-Columbian music and stories with students across all ages, instilling a sense of cultural appreciation and understanding that will resonate for generations. Additionally, Gerardo's volunteer efforts brought the sounds of his guitar and pan flutes to the corridors of the Portland International Airport and many community events, fostering a welcoming atmosphere and enriching our city's cultural offerings. It is with great respect and admiration that we present today's proclamation celebrating Gerardo's enduring contributions to making Portland a more diverse, vibrant, and culturally rich community. I now invite Commissioner Rubio to read the proclamation first in English.
Thank you. So whereas culture, creativity, and the arts fuel our economy, nurture the spirits of our citizenry and shape Portland's identity. And whereas the city of Portland acknowledges the significant impact of Latin American arts and culture in our community, enriching our cultural landscape and fostering diversity. Whereas the late Gerardo Calderón, from Mexico, an Oregonian, a composer, musical director, producer, multi-instrumentalist, sound designer, music educator, teaching artist and author, made Portland, Oregon, his creative home. And whereas Gerardo Calderón, who was the musical director of the Grupo Condor, co-founder of Nuestro Canto with Nelda Reyes, a group dedicated to the preservation of Mexican and Oregonian art and culture through arts education, and a member of Cosecha Mestiza and former Andanzas Lo Nuestro and Caniason. And whereas as a teacher, teaching artist for 30 years, Gerardo Calderón taught students in pre-K, kinder, elementary, middle, and high school, pre-Columbian music, stories, and instrument making. And whereas for the community, Gerardo Calderón shared his music and culture for 35 years with the Instituto de Cultura Oregoniana, Arts Learning, Reforma Northwest, Merrill Hurst Museum, Chehalis Cultural Center, Oregon Historical Society, Cinco de Mayo festivals across the state, and in Multnomah, Tiger, Tuolton, Lake Oswego, Hillsborough, Cornelius, Forest Grove, Hood River County Libraries, and at community colleges and universities in Portland and throughout the state, including festivals throughout the Pacific Northwest, eastern United States, Mexico and Mexico. And whereas Gerardo Calderón has composed and designed sound for arts and culture organizations and theater groups such as Milagro, Tears of Joy, Third Angle Music, Hand-to-Mouth Theater, Coho Theater, Voz Alta, and Grito Poetry Productions. And whereas Gerardo Calderón's volunteers have welcomed visitors at the International Portland Airport with his healing acoustic guitar and pan flutes, and supported creative, community-based, intercultural exchanges and fundraising for a great number of local and regional artists and nonprofit organization. And whereas Gerardo Calderón serves as an example of an artist, a culture bearer, and a community builder through his creative achievements, leadership, and community engagement, and has filled the city of Portland with orgullo, pride.
Now therefore, I, Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby present this proclamation in honor of Gerardo Calderón for his dedicated contributions as a cherished Latin American and Oregonian artist in our diverse and creative city and community.
Thank you, and so.
All right, so I'll say it in Spanish.
Yes, in Spanish.
And I'll dance at the same time. And then I'll hand it over to Carmen at the last paragraph. Is that right? Okay.
Considerando que la cultura, la creatividad, y las artes impulsan nuestra economía, nutren el espíritu de nuestra ciudadanía y definen la identidad de Portland. Y considerando que la ciudad de Portland reconoce el impacto significativo de las artes, la cultura latinoamericanas en nuestra comunidad, enriqueciendo nuestro paisaje cultural y fomentando la diversidad. Y considerando que el fallecido Gerardo Calderón de México, Oregoniano, compositor, director musical, productor, multi-instrumentista, diseñador de sonido, educador musical, artista docente y autor, el coliso de Portland, Oregon, su hogar creativo. Y considerando que Gerardo Calderón, quien fue director musical de Grupo Condor, cofundador de Nuestro Canto con Nelda Reyes, un grupo dedicado a la preservación del arte y la cultura mexicana y Oregoniana a través de la educación artística, y miembro de Cosecha Mestiza, y anteriormente de Andanzas Lo Nuestro y Caniason. Y considerando que como artista docente durante 30 años, Gerardo Calderón ha enseñado a estudiantes de pre-K, kinder, primaria, secundaria, y preparatoria música precolombina, historias y fabricación de instrumentos. Y considerando que para la comunidad, Gerardo Calderón compartió su música y cultura durante 35 años con el Instituto de Cultura Oregoniana, Arts Learning, Reforma Northwest, Merrill Hurst Museum, Chehalis Cultural Center, Oregon Historical Society, festivales de Cinco de Mayo a lo largo del estado, y en Multnomah, Tiger, Tuolton, Lake Oswego, Hillsborough, Cornelius, Forest Grove, Hood River County Libraries, y en colegios comunitarios y universidades en Portland, y a lo largo del estado, incluyendo festivales a lo largo del noroeste del Pacífico, este de los Estados Unidos y México. Y considerando que Gerardo Calderón ha compuesto y diseñado sonido para organizaciones de artes y cultura y grupos de teatro como Milagro, Tears of Joy, Third Angle Music, Hand-to-Mouth Theater, Coho Theater, Voz Alta, y Grito Poetry Productions. Y considerando que el voluntariado de Gerardo Calderón dio la bienvenida a visitantes en el Aeropuerto Internacional de Portland con su guitar acústica sanadora y flautas de pan, y apoyó intercambios interculturales comunitarios basados en la creatividad y la recaudación de fondos para un gran número de artistas locales y regionales y organizaciones sin fines de lucro. Y considerando que Gerardo Calderón sirve de ejemplo como artista, portador de cultura, y constructor de comunidad a través de sus logros creativos, liderazgo, y compromiso comunitario, y que ha llenado la ciudad de Portland de orgullo.
Ahora, por lo tanto, se resuelve que la ciudad de Portland, por la presente proclamación, honra a Gerardo Calderón por sus dedicadas contribuciones como un apreciado artista latinoamericano y Oregoniano en nuestra ciudad y en nuestras comunidades diversas y creativas. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. And colleagues, why don't we take... We'd like a photo up front, and then immediately after, we'll take a quick recess to let city staff have a break. They've been at it all morning, and we will reconvene at noon. We're in recess. We're in recess.
to reflect plan design changes as recommended and administratively required by the Bureau of Human Resources for plan offerings from July 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Item 337, amend contracts related to employee health and welfare administration and begin formal solicitation for employee benefit plan consulting services as administratively required and on behalf of the Bureau of Human Resources.
Thanks, Kealan. Every year, the city's Labor Management Benefits Committee and the Portland Police Association review the employee benefits program and then provide recommendations for any necessary changes. In reviewing these plans, we must simultaneously best ensure employees and their covered dependents have access to healthcare plan options that meet their needs, while also protecting the long-term financial stability and solvency of the plans, given the direct impact these costs have on strained bureau budgets. The costs of healthcare are changing in a way we have not seen in recent times. I am absolutely trying not to use the word unprecedented. Many employer groups are navigating the same driving factors of increases: inflation, the return of claims post-pandemic, increased costs charged by providers, advances in medical technology, new medications hitting the market, and other factors. Despite the collaborative conversations between all parties involved over the last several months, the Bureau of Human Resources and the labor groups were unable to come to a consensus on recommended changes for the upcoming year, which brings us to the two emergency ordinances we have before us today. The first emergency ordinance would approve the fiscal year 2425 benefits plan document and adopt the recommended changes proposed by the Labor Management Benefits Committee and the Bureau of Human Resources, while declining other changes in addition to state and federally mandated changes. The second emergency ordinance would authorize the chief human resources officer to enter into contracts, contract, contract extensions, and begin the formal solicitation process for the employee benefits consulting services as administratively required to manage health and welfare plans, as well as pay claims on behalf of eligible plan participants and the BHR benefits office. Before I turn this over to the Bureau of Human Resources, I want to quickly review the order of events for these items. Tracy Warren, interim chief human resources officer, Michelle Taylor, benefits manager, and Santos Aguilar, benefits supervisor, are here to walk us through the ordinances. Then, the council will introduce and second amendments for consideration, after which we will hear some invited testimony, followed by public testimony. Once public testimony is complete, council will deliberate and vote on the amendments before voting on the ordinance. With that, I'll turn this over to interim chief human resources officer Tracy Warren. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, my name is Tracy Warren. I'm the interim HR director for the city of Portland. And today, BHR will be presenting two ordinances together, but we'll ask council to vote separately. We are going to start with ordinance 336. And as discussed, every year, BHR presents plan design recommendations to council for approval alongside planned documents for the upcoming year. As the mayor discussed, in past years, the city has held rate increases to levels below trend without making big changes to our benefit coverage for employees and plan participants. This year, however, is different because we're facing double-digit increases for three out of our four most popular health plans. Some of the things that, you know, were discussed are inflationary costs, return of post-pandemic claims, increased provider and facility charges, advances in medical technology, new medications, lack of costs shifting to plan participants, and depleted reserves. We anticipate increased costs related to health coverage over the next few fiscal years. Making this decision an important one for council to set us up for what may be ahead of us in future fiscal years. Next slide, please. The next couple of slides, we're going to give you a little bit of a different view that shows us employee wage increases, the average employee wage increases over the years, starting with fiscal year 1416, moving us through to fiscal year 2324, as it relates to the premium share that employees pay. So what you have in front of you is fiscal, what you can see from the dotted line is the average hourly rate among LMBC-covered employees, which was 3535. The cost of medical vision coverage per month was 3162 for the most expensive plan for City Core. And then in fiscal year 2324, the average hourly base rate has increased to 4872, which is a 37.8% increase compared to our fiscal year 15, or excuse me, 1416. Meanwhile, the most expensive plan, which is Kaiser Northwest, is 4054 per employee, which is a 28.2% increase over the fiscal year plan rate. So the city has continued to increase pay while also maintaining lower premium costs for employees. Next slide, please. This next slide is for our plan participants who are PPA members, Portland Police Association. The reason that we've separated out these two groups is because there's different health funds that pay for these costs. In fiscal year 1516, the average hourly base rate among PPA-covered employees was 3946. The cost of medical and vision coverage per month was 3432 for the most expensive plan. In fiscal year 2324, the average hourly base rate has increased to 5156, which is a 30.7% increase compared to fiscal year 1516. Meanwhile, the most expensive plan, city net, is now 3784 per month, which is a 10.3% increase over the fiscal year 1516 highest plan rate. Also to be noticed, we don't have Kaiser listed on this chart because there's currently no premium share for Kaiser participants. Next slide, please. So the 2425 proposed healthcare renewal budget. So currently, the city is budgeted at a 5% increase over the current fiscal year, which is roughly $6.5 million. The recommendation that we're going to present to you today is a request to increase the city's budget to 8%, which would roughly add $3.9 million and increase the overall cost for the city this coming fiscal year to $10.4 million. I have Michelle Taylor here with us, our benefits manager, who's going to go over more details about the specifics of the plan that we're asking you to make changes to. Next slide, please.
Hi there, and good afternoon now, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Michelle Taylor. I'm the benefit manager here for the city of Portland. On this slide, we're going to talk a little bit about kind of how we bring decisions forth to you and understanding the work that goes into the recommendations that come forth to council. This is made up of two groups. We have the Labor Management Benefit Committee, which Tracy had referenced, and also the Portland Police Association. Each of those groups collaborates with BHR, our consulting partners, each year to bring forth recommendations that ultimately you all approve. Both groups begin looking at data typically in January of each year. The reason for that timeline is that our plan vendors submit renewal information to our consulting partners at the end of December of each year. And it's timed that way because we typically need about three months' worth of data at least to be able to begin looking at recommendations. And there are other factors that go into the recommendations. Our consultants then receive that information from our vendor partners. They take some time to analyze it, to negotiate back and forth with our vendor partners if needed. And then they present information alongside of BHR in January to both the LMBC and the Portland Police Association. From there, we really start to kind of dig into what decisions need to be made, what recommendations need to come forth to council. That happens throughout January, February, and typically a vote happens in March. Then we bring forth those recommendations to council in April of each year. And that timing is due to the fact that the Bureau of Human Resources, the benefit office, needs to turn around incredibly quickly and get our open enrollment going on so that employees can make important healthcare decisions for the upcoming year. We're scheduled to start open enrollment on May 10th, which is why it's so important to get this information in front of you so that we have time to get information out, especially if there are changes to our plan participants. On the next slide, please. This slide goes over some strategies that we take in order to help control costs. I will talk a little bit about these as we go through the presentation, but at least this gives you a few of the main points. And our role is really ensuring that our plans are stable and solvent, not only for employees, but their dependents, our retirees, and our COPA participants. We support a shared responsibility between the city, between our plan participants, and for those who utilize our plan services. At the top, you'll see vendor contract negotiations. That's basically our first approach. And it starts with conversations between us, our consulting partners, and the vendors relating to ongoing contract negotiations. One tool is to commit to contracts over a determined period of time to help lock us into rates and also lower our administrative costs. You'll hear more about our contract extensions in the next ordinance. Lower admin costs help us mitigate increases in premiums, although they're an incredibly small portion of the money that goes out on behalf of our overall spend. The second approach you'll see is the use of excess reserves. And there's some additional details on the right side that help explain a little more about excess reserves. These are available when we're above an excess amount and for our self-funded plan only. Reserves cannot be used for fully insured plans such as Kaiser. On the labor management benefit side, our target reserve level is about $25 million based on our plan size and our stop-loss limits. We're currently hovering between about $19 and $20 million in reserves, which means we need to develop likely a multi-year strategy to get our reserves back up to that target level. Anything above 150% of the risk-based capital of reserves, so above $25 million, our strategy would be to use those excess reserves to help us buy down our premium costs, saving bureaus' money and also employees. That is something we've historically used over the years as a tool. But in this year's case, it is not available for the Labor Management Benefit Committee. Anything below that 150%, that $25 million, does put the city at risk. And we need to begin building those reserves back up. The third stop in that little circle is our stop-loss. It's like insurance for insurance. Our self-funded plan is responsible to pay for healthcare claims up to $1.2 million. Anything over that is covered by the stop-loss policy that we purchase to protect our plan from something that's catastrophic. It's not recommended to increase our current stop-loss levels for the Labor Management Benefit Committee, so that's not an option for this year. But we are proposing an increase to $300,000 on the PPA side as part of our cost savings measure. Right now, on the Labor Management Benefit side, having a $19 or $20 million reserve amount and a $1.2 million stop-loss limit means that we could have 10, 12 claims at any given point that put us to a place where we become insolvent. It could be a premature baby. It could be a rare cancer diagnosis. It could be any number of things. We know that with medical technology and advances, it doesn't take much to get to that point. So we do not support or recommend using any reserve amounts. Keeping down the list, at the very bottom, is utilization management. Where we could change pharmacy formularies and guide folks to specific types of medications that are cost-effective, not only for the plan but also the member. We could look at things like prior authorization, step therapy. There's a number of tools embedded within our health plan that we already utilize, but there's always involvement in that space. Plan design changes is the next step that we look at in order to mitigate our costs. Things like increased copays, deductibles, coinsurance, out-of-pocket maximums. Some of those things we're bringing forth to you in our recommendation today. And the last stop there is the most disruptive, and that's network change. But sometimes, it's the only option that's faced in controlling costs. One thing that's not on this chart here is premiums. Premiums is not something that happens. Those discussions typically don't happen within the Labor Management Benefit space or the Portland Police because they are embedded in the collective bargaining agreements. So that's the reason you're not seeing premium share on this side. Next slide, please. So we are moving forward, bringing you the recommendation of the Labor Management Benefit Committee. There were a number of things that were in front of them this year. And they did have a quorum. They had all 20 out of 20 votes to move these two items forward here. That is a 1.5% reduction in the self-funded plan. That amounts for about $1 million. All of the other items that went forth to LMBC did not receive a quorum. They were typically split 10 votes to 10 votes, labor and management, with management voting in favor of changes. On the next slide, please. So what BHR is bringing forth today are a handful of recommendations. I'm going to start with Labor Management Benefit Group and their self-funded PPO plan. What we are proposing today would reduce the premiums by about 1.5%, bringing us to the target, in addition to the changes that we'll be talking about on the next slide. We are proposing an individual deductible going from $250 to $500. The out-of-pocket maximum for individuals going from $1,800 to $2,000, with the family going from $54,000 to $6,000. The third proposal that wraps up into that 1.5% reduction is generic medications. We're proposing that we still keep the coverage at 10% for generic, 20% for preferred, and 30% coverage for non-preferred, but we are proposing that we increase the caps. All of these changes that you see on this slide here would save about $1 million. We have about 948 of our 9,200 members on the plan that meet the out-of-pocket maximum at the current level. So we are talking about a 10% population that would potentially be impacted by some of these changes. We believe that the deductibles, the out-of-pocket maximum, and the prescription coverage keep us aligned with other public sector groups. keep us aligned with other public sector groups and keep us competitive in the market. There are a number of other public plans out there that have a separate out-of-pocket maximum for their prescription coverage. Our prescription coverage and co-pays that our members pay count towards that $1,800 or our proposed $2,000 out-of-pocket maximum. So as we're comparing ourselves to other entities, I would ask folks to look at the pharmacy coverage as well. This protects our folks from something catastrophic, and we believe that it is reasonable. On the next slide, you'll see our proposed recommendations for our Kaiser plan. Our Kaiser plan is facing a 14% increase. It's valued at over $2 million. The Labor Management Benefit Committee did not get enough votes to move these recommendations forth to you all for your approval. What we're proposing under the Kaiser plan, and this is a package deal. I know you all have heard a little bit about not having a lot of options. Kaiser is a health maintenance organization. We worked incredibly hard with our consulting partners with Kaiser to come up with a package deal. That was the only way we could get to the 8% recommendation. The proposed changes increase urgent care from $20 to $35, specialty scans from $50 to $75. There's some hospital inpatient, that's 10% after deductible. I think it was two days ago, we were able to confirm, based on some feedback that we received from folks after the Labor Management Benefit Committee vote, that there was some frustration over inpatient mental health and substance use being included in that increase at the 10% after deductible. We were able to continue negotiations on that piece only with Kaiser, and they have confirmed that they would carve those out and there would be no member responsibility for inpatient hospitalization and treatment related to chemical use, substance use, and mental health. And that was with no increase in their proposed cost to the city. So we were able to work with one concern, and we're happy to report back that with this proposed change, there would not be any increase for members related to inpatient mental health and substance use support. Deductibles and out-of-pocket, you can see those proposed increases. This was a very difficult negotiation with Kaiser. They have historically had incredibly low out-of-pocket costs for members, which makes it seem much harder for folks to understand, but we still believe that this is reasonable, and that's why we're here today to bring forth these recommendations. On the next slide, we'll show some information related to our recommendation for the Portland Police Association changes. These changes are impacting their self-funded plan only. Their Kaiser renewal came in at a lower, much lower, level than the Labor Management Benefit Committee, so we are asking for changes just to their self-funded plan only because it came in at a 27% increase. It is unsustainable. So BHR is recommending council approve a package that includes the changes that we need. In the 9%, there are some changes that have minimal impact to membership. We want to use any excess reserves to buy down the rates. That'll get us about 5%. We're proposing to increase their stop-loss levels, change the dental network, which is the same as something that the LMBC moved forward, maximum plan allowance, and then some implementation of some pharmacy management tools to help us mitigate costs. Additionally, we're proposing a change that moves from the Canexus Network, which is the broadest network that Moda offers. It includes Providence, OHSU, Legacy, and Adventist providers and facilities, and a whole host of others. This change would move them to Synergy, which is a cost savings tool that other organizations have used. It would remove Providence and two radiology clinics from the network, but many of the other clinics and providers would still be available for use. There's about a 25 or 26% impact on their membership, and we would be committed to working with them on a strategy for moving this change forward. We're also proposing a 1.9% decrease, which would switch their pharmacy from the current formulary to a more restricted formulary, and we're estimating that these changes are valued at about $1.8 million. I would add, before we move on to the other slide, I apologize. I want to just talk a little bit about the differences between the PPA and the LMBC plan. The PPA plans are already much richer than what is offered to the rest of our city. We have an $1,800 currently out-of-pocket maximum on the city for side for LMBC. There's a $1,000 out-of-pocket maximum on the PPA side right now. And the reason that we are proposing the network change is because their plan design for their self-funded plan is embedded in your collective bargaining agreement, and so we don't have as much flexibility with this group as we do the Labor Management Benefit Committee. We did originally propose a network change to LMBC, but we worked through with Labor. We knew that that was going to be disruptive, and we kind of moved away from that and started to really focus on actual plan design changes with that group. So, one additional note. On the next slide, we talk a lot about how our plans compare. There is the light orange side, if you can see that on the screen, that represents the city of Portland. This is really just looking at mostly the Labor Management Benefit Committee group. PPA is, as I just said, a little bit more favorable. The middle graph is how the state of Oregon overall looks. The KFF was able to develop some tools that were local and also on the national level. So the city, the state in general, not the state of Oregon as an employer. And then nationwide, we compare for employee costs. Our employee costs are much lower than in the region and also nationally. The next group of graphs here explains the employer costs. So as you can see, our overall costs that the city pays on behalf of our plan participants' coverage is much higher than what is typically seen at the state level and also the national level. When you combine the employee costs plus the employer costs, that gets you to the next set of graphs. So as you can see, our costs are low, but yet the overall costs of the plan are high. And then on the far right, you get to the deductible. What you're seeing on this slide is what we're proposing at that $500 level. So even with our increased deductible proposal, we are still well below the state.
Commissioner, yeah, just a clarification question. When you said Oregon and national, did you make it clear that it's the state of Oregon or just everybody who lives in Oregon?
It is the
Like a big catch-all?
Employers in the state.
Private sector as well. And where'd you get this information?
From the Kaiser Family Foundation.
From Kaiser? Okay. And national's the same?
Not Kaiser Permanente. It's a separate group.
Sorry.
It's confusing.
I inserted some bad information, so it's just Kaiser?
It is the Kaiser Family Foundation.
Okay, the philanthropic arm. And then national is?
That's the entire
It's not federal employees. It's, okay.
Everybody.
And it's from the same source?
The data that they collect from their employer sources.
Okay, the same source of information. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for catching that. On the next slide, I am going to turn it over to Santos Aguilar for some more information as we kind of shift over to an introduction of the next ordinance, which is 337, as I believe we're reading these all together, and then we will turn it over.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Santos Aguilar, Benefit Supervisor within BHR. I am here to introduce ordinance 337, which authorizes the Chief Human Resources Officer to enter into contract extensions with Moda, Kaiser, BSP, Standard Insurance, and Care Fertility on behalf of BHR beginning July 1, 2024. Additionally, this ordinance gives BHR the ability to begin a formal solicitation for employee benefit and consulting services. Moda, Kaiser, BSP standard contracts would extend through June 30 of 2029, so it's an additional five-year period, unless it's terminated earlier. And we're also requesting some additional funds to this contract as we extend it for additional period of time. The Care and Fertility contract would be extended just by three years, whereas all other contracts would be five years, so it's through June 30, 2027, to continue supportive services for employees who are looking to expand their family through adoption or surrogacy and provide resources and support for new parents. BHR and their consulting partners and consulting have teamed up to negotiate rates. Many of these are locked in during the three-to-five-year period of the contract terms. Keeping our administrative cost low allows us to continue offering competitive, qualified packages to employees and families.
Thank you, Santos. As we had stated earlier in our cost-containing methods, what Santos is presenting to you are fair and reasonable contracts that put us through a three-year period or a five-year period. They were able to negotiate lower admin fees for a couple of our vendor partners in order to help keep our costs as low as possible. So we would ask that you approve 337 as well as 336. Next slide, please. As you can see, our next step is that we're looking for council to approve ordinances 336 and 337 as presented by BHR.
All right, very good. So we can take questions now, and I understand there are some amendments that people would like to put on the table as well. And maybe just to warm things up, I'll jump in with a couple of questions. First of all, the chart that you showed comparing the city of Portland's relative contributions and relative costs to employees, how is that? The last chart, I want to make sure that showed if we adopted the program that you're presenting at 8%, it shows we would still be, according to us, highly competitive. Is that a fair characterization?
Absolutely.
Okay. There was one thing in the presentation that did concern me, and I realize it's sort of like a funnel. We start at the top, it's costs, it's benefits, and if everybody's healthy and the costs are minimal, everybody's happy. Then you start getting towards people with pre-existing conditions. And one of the most prevalent and worst, of course, is cancer. And I noticed that the radiology issue is one area where we're asking people to potentially switch clinics. I think it may have been just within the PPA contract. Was that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're asking, and I don't know anybody's healthcare issues, it's none of my business, but if there were somebody currently within PPA who is under radiology treatment, that is a life-saving treatment, I would presume, tell me what happens to those individuals.
We are in conversations right now with Moda on if this change were to move forward, how do we support folks who are currently in treatment? How do we support folks who are in a third trimester of their pregnancy and they've been working with Providence, and that's the place where they want to deliver?
Right.
We believe that we'll have some mechanisms in place to allow for some continuity of care for a certain period of time.
Okay, so if somebody is, for example, currently receiving treatment, perhaps we could just buy an extension, if you will, for that individual? Is that a possibility within a plan like this?
It is a possibility.
Okay, because I can see how that would just be highly disruptive and very threatening to somebody if they felt that they had to stop treatment for a very life-threatening situation and suddenly be moved to an entirely new team of providers in a new location. But other than that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Maps. Did you have a question?
Not at the moment. I'll defer to my colleagues. Let me jump in if someone else has a question.
If there's no questions, we can go to amendments.
Actually, can I, just real quickly, I want to start out by saying I really appreciate today's presentation, and I really appreciate all the work that staff has put into this. And I also want to recognize and basically put on the record, I think something extraordinary has happened this year with their healthcare costs, and the systems that we've had in place for a long time have kind of failed us in this particular moment. And we've had about 34 minutes of presentation kind of explaining to us how we got here and what are some of our options moving forward. Tim, can I put you on the spot for a second here? And just, before we move on to the next phase, can you give us like a 45-second summary of where we're at, of what happened, why we're here, and what your colleagues to your right have presented?
I'll be happy to do that, Commissioner. On the financial side of this, what CBO is recommending to the council today is to use the compensation set aside to cover these new costs going forward. And the estimates we have currently are about $5.3 million more. Of that, about $2,176,000 would be general fund, and non-general fund would be about $3.1 million. Okay, so those are the numbers we have here. So when we say compensation set aside, we're talking about general fund bureaus for the most part. And the reason we're recommending this is we already include within the compensation set aside estimates for healthcare. In this case, it was 5%. So we're actually needing to deal with the net increase here in those. We would also recommend to council that we increase the amount of appropriation, if possible, in the compensation set aside. And the reason for that is we're seeing a trend with the bureaus where in the past, they've had lots of vacancy savings that offset their compensation costs during the year. And right now, we're seeing more come in wanting full compensation. And I think that's just an example that they don't have as many vacant positions probably coming out of COVID when they started filling positions again. So we're looking at that. So it's a normal thing for us to do in these cases to use the compensation set aside. But if we can, through a bump type of situation, we have excess resources, we would recommend to council that they incorporate that into the compensation set aside, just so we're not running into a situation when it comes time to take the money out of the compensation set aside and we don't have enough, we have to open up the budget to figure out what to do. So that's our recommendation to council on how to fund this increase.
Okay, thank you very much. No more questions. Very good. Commissioner Rubio, you had amendments? Is that correct?
Yes, I have two amendments. And then following the amendments, I would love to ask if Heidi can help explain what they mean because they're pretty dense. So I move to amend Directive A to add, quote, "As stated in paragraphs 3, 5, and 7 of the findings above," end quote, after the phrase, then quote again, "The council hereby adopts the recommendations of the Bureau of Human Resources and the LMBC to," and then insert, quote, "The new paragraph will read, Section A. The council hereby adopts the recommendations of the Bureau of Human Resources and the LMBC as stated in paragraphs 3, 5, and 7 of the findings above while declining other changes and amends and restates the City of Portland Employee Benefits Program effective July 1, 2024 in a form substantially similar to the attached Exhibit A. The mayor or the chief human resources officer are hereby authorized to execute the plan document and any amendments during the planned year as required by law." May I have a second?
Second. Commissioner Rubio moves. Rubio, one. Commissioner Maps, seconds. And I understand this is a technical amendment.
And then I have a second. I move to add New Findings 6 and 8, amend the existing directive, and add two new directives. Paragraph 6 of the finding will read, "Union members of the LMBC and the City of Portland professional workers propose a surcharge paid by employees in pre-tax dollars to supplement the employee portion of the health insurance premium as an alternative to the terms reflected in paragraph 5 above. The surcharge proposed by the LMBC unions and CPPW is in the amount of $25 per month per employee for the '24-'25 fiscal year. All union members of the LMBC must enter into a letter of agreement to provide for this proposal." Paragraph 8 of the findings will read, "The PPA proposed an agreement to use self-funded excess reserves, increases self-funded stop-loss levels, changing the excess reserves, increases self-funded stop-loss levels, changing the self-funded dental plan network, changing the maximum plan allowance for out-of-network medical services, implementing the advanced utilization management program within the pharmacy plan, and the pharmacy formulary change for fiscal year 24-25 with the value of 1.9% of the increased costs along with the other agreement terms unrelated to the health plan costs. In the council direction, Section A reads, A, 'Council hereby authorizes the Bureau of Human Resources in consultation with the City Attorney's Office to enter into a letter of agreement with the LMBC union members and the CPPW that includes but is not limited to a surcharge of $25 per month per employee in pre-tax dollars to supplement the health insurance premiums for the 24-25 fiscal year. If by the end of day on April 30, 2024, the LMBC member unions and CPPW enter into such agreement, then council hereby adopts the terms of the letter of agreement and the LMBC approved recommendations to change the maximum amount of plan allowance for out-of-network medical services and a change to the self-funded dental plan network valued at 1.5%. Council further adopts and amends and restates the City of Portland Employee Benefits Program effective July 1, 2024 in a form substantially similar to the attached Exhibit A. The mayor or the chief human resources officer are hereby authorized to execute the planned document and any amendments during the planned year as required by law.'" Okay, almost done, bear with me. In the council direction, Section B reads, B, "'Council hereby authorizes the Bureau of Human Resources in consultation with the City Attorney's Office to enter into a letter of agreement with the PPA for the 24-25 fiscal year that includes, along with the other terms, an agreement to use self-funded excess reserves and increases self-funded stop-loss levels, changing the self-funded dental plan network, changing the maximum plan allowance for out-of-network medical services, implementing the advanced utilization management program within the pharmacy plan and the pharmacy formulary change. If by the end of day on April 30, 2024, the PPA enters into such agreement, then council hereby adopts the terms of the letter of agreement for the PPA health plan. Council further adopts and amends and restates the City of Portland Employee Benefits Program effective July 1, 2024 in a form substantially similar to the attached Exhibit A. The mayor or the chief human resources officer are hereby authorized to execute the planned document and any amendments during the planned year as required by law.'" And finally, the amended Section C are as follows. C, "If the LMBC member unions and the CPPW do not enter the letter of agreement in paragraph A, then as of May 1, 2024, the council hereby adopts the recommendations of the Bureau of Human Resources and the LMBC as stated in paragraphs 3, 5, and 7 of the findings above while declining other changes and amends and restates the City of Portland Employee Benefits Program effective July 1, 2024 in a form substantially similar to the attached Exhibit A. The mayor or the chief human resources officer are hereby authorized to execute the planned document and any amendments during the planned year as required by law." May I have a second?
Second.
Mayor, Commissioners, can I insert one thing? I apologize.
Sure.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Heidi Brown with the City Attorney's Office. I know we've kind of been last minute working on the amendments. In paragraph C, we said, "If the LMBC member unions and CPPW do not enter into the agreement, the letter of agreement in paragraph A," we'd also need to add in, "And if the PPA similarly does not enter into it, then as of May 1, 2024."
Okay.
So if we could just add in, "And if the PPA does not enter into the letter of agreement in paragraph B."
And I move exactly what Heidi said.
I'll write that up for everyone. I apologize.
Okay, so this is an amendment to the amendment, is that correct, Heidi?
Sorry?
This is an amendment to the amendment, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so Commissioner Rubio moves an amendment to Rubio 2. Commissioner Ryan, seconds. Call the rule on the amendment to the amendment.
Aye.
Gonzalez, Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Neeler.
Aye. So now that amendment is part of Rubio Amendment Number 2, which is still open. Are there any further amendments? Commissioner Maps?
No, I have no further amendments, but if I remember the run of the show, Commissioner Rubio laid out after introducing the amendment, she was going to ask Heidi to provide some Cliff Notes on what the amendments actually do.
Thank you, Commissioner and Mayor, again. Good afternoon. So in summary, the union members of the Labor Management Benefits Committee includes all city unions except the PPA representing members at PPB. So I just want to remind us where we are with the LMBC. And the changes that are adopted impact all city employees except those PPA members at PPB. And so the LMBC union membership came forward with a proposal to council for an agreement between the city and those unions that includes a health insurance premium surcharge of $25 per month for the fiscal year 24 and 25. So the letter of agreement would have, amongst some other terms, that is the basic portion of a letter of agreement between the city and those union members if you were to adopt these amendments. That surcharge, just so everybody's clear, is a pre-tax dollar surcharge that's taken out of city employees' paychecks, and that would occur on every other week and divide it in half. So under BHR's recommendation, the city, already funding the bulk of these cost increases due to rising healthcare costs, would, some of those changes that BHR recommended would not then occur. So the city would still pay the 8%, but some of those increases, like the increase to out-of-pocket maximums, the changes to the generic medication caps, and the changes to the Kaiser Plan, instead of those happening, this surcharge would occur. And that would fund almost 2/3 of that cost that's still remaining between what the city, what BHR is proposing that the city pay for and what BHR is proposing changes to the plan that would make up the difference in that cost. And so it would increase what the city cost is by approximately $1.2 million, and these are approximate numbers. For PPA, so that's basically what we're talking about, for the LMBC, so most city employees. For the PPA, the amendment provides for certain changes to the health trust plan design. Mayor, you called out that question about if we're changing the plan of where people can go for services. So currently, PPA members can go to Providence and certain radiology clinics, and you were noting, well, what if they're in a certain radiology clinic? What the PPA has come forward and requested that council authorize an agreement between the cities would be that that change that would get rid of Providence and the radiology clinics would not occur. And instead, the other changes that BHR was recommending would occur, additionally a change that will save the city approximately $200,000.
That's in the base ordinance, correct? That's in the proposal as proposed?
In the one that's proposed, there are plan changes that would provide additional cost savings to the city of about $2 million. And PPA is proposing, make some of those changes, but not all of them, and city, you take on some additional costs. And the one they're proposing that you not make is that change from the Canexus Plan to the Synergy Plan. And that increase in cost is approximately $700,000. I will defer to Tim Groo, our CBO Director, to explain the finances more if you're interested in that. But just basically, what are we talking about? Those are the amendments and what they would do. Is there any, are there any questions I can answer regarding those, just the meaning of those?
I'm a little confused.
Please.
Thanks for the description. Thank you for asking the question. So in your presentation in response to my question about the radiology issue, you said you're still working on a strategy. What is that strategy?
I can talk about it a little bit if that's okay. So the benefit team is currently working with Moda, who processes our claims. They're the ones who manage the network. So we're currently in conversations with them related to this proposed change. They're looking at impacted members, which is where we got the about 26% of the membership that would be impacted, and we're beginning to have conversations with them. At this point, we think we could go out possibly three or four months. I'm a little bit cautious to say that in this kind of setting, because nothing is finalized at this point. But what I will say is that anything that we do to communicate, that will absolutely be intentional. It will come mostly from Moda, because they are going to know who is impacted by these changes. Our office, because of privacy reasons, don't know exactly who it is that's impacted by it. But we'll continue to have these conversations. We're committed to ensuring that people aren't just cut off on July 1 if this proposed change moves forward, but we would work on some sort of solution.
Great, thank you.
Heidi, did you finish your summary?
I did, thank you. And I was available for questions if there are any, but hopefully that simplified down what the amendments would do.
Great. Okay. If that completes the Q and A, then we have some invited testimony from council, I understand.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have invited our labor partners to come and directly speak to council both about the ordinance that's been brought forward by the city and by the amendments that have been brought forward by council. I want to make it clear, I invited all of our labor partners to participate in today's discussion. We have many folks from labor here today. I don't think that we have every union here, but I want to invite the folks who are here to please come on up, and let's take a little bit of time to get your perspective on both the original ordinance and the amendments that are on the table.
Great. And not to be a jerk, but I want to note that we have a very lengthy afternoon session coming up at 2:00 PM, and I'm hoping I can give city staff a little bit of a break prior to that session. I myself am going to have my lunch delivered, so do not take it as a statement of being impolite if I eat while we're here, because my suspicion is we're going to go right through to 2:00. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I'll go ahead and lead off. My name is Rachel Whiteside, and I'm union representative for PROTEX-17 members at the city. I'm also the co-chair of the city's Labor Management Benefits Committee. Just for a little bit of background, this is my seventh renewal cycle on the committee, and I have been extremely frustrated by the process this year in particular for reviewing and making recommendations. I feel like the process was slowed down by incomplete information. There was non-transparent negotiations with our insurance providers, and frankly, the deadline just doesn't allow for the meaningful and values-based conversations that this committee is expected to hold. I feel like the purpose of the LMBC is to ensure that we have an affordable benefits package that meets our adopted city values, and I don't believe that the changes advanced by BHR after being voted down by the LMBC reflect those values. I'd like to thank Commissioner Rubio's office for advancing, hearing our concerns, and advancing the amendments to the ordinance. I also just need to acknowledge the elephant in the room, that it's not the city's fault, it's not the workers' fault. None of us have caused the crisis in healthcare costs that we're staring down. This is a national problem, but of course, it's one that we have to tackle nonetheless. I strongly believe that these amendments reflect a collaborative arrangement between labor and the city, and that they will prevent cuts to employee benefits. But most importantly, by holding the city's major benefits plans at current levels, it provides the committee a full year to address the changing landscape and providing the LMBC with the needed time to address these skyrocketing healthcare costs in a way that is both responsible and transparent. And sitting here today, I can state on the record that myself and our members are committed to the process of the LMBC in maintaining the level of care that city workers need and expect. So I would urge you to please vote yes on the amendments presented by Commissioner Rubio. Aaron, Isaac?
Thank you all for your time today, and I just want to echo, the problems that we're facing are complicated. We're reforming our city government. We faced in the last four years just a myriad of issues that are financially complicated, culturally complicated, morally complicated, and all of the things. And I'm sorry, Aaron Schmaltz, President of Portland Police Association, I was supposed to say that first. The thing that was really challenging for me from this perspective, I mean, as we're navigating all of these issues, you all have been very busy, and this conversation has always been sort of quiet. Health benefits come up, people feel a little impacted, it's not that big of a deal, and we move on. And with all of the things going on, I think a lot of us were rocked back, and I know for me, when I was presented with ultimately where this was going, I have to apologize for Michelle, because she got to see a frustrated version of me, but all I could think of as I went home, as a father of a daughter with immunosuppressant issues, who has Providence, whose life was saved by Providence because we couldn't find a good doctor, that this is not what this city's values are. As a second-generation Portland city employee, this is just not who we are. And I was pleased to find out, as I spoke with you and your staffs, that I was correct, that we were all looking for a solution against a timeline that is impossible. And so, you know, my desire through these amendments is simply to create a runway. We can't solve this problem this year. We can't. We don't have time. There are wildly complicated contractual problems that create months and months of conversation. This is not a one-year problem. This is a two-ish, three-ish year problem of figuring out how we can work with labor in partnership with the city to figure out what is a stable and sustainable healthcare model, so that none of us have to have members calling us and saying, "My daughter has cystic fibrosis, and she's been in treatment for 18 years, and these are her specialists, and they're all gone in two months. Give us a year and two months. Let us figure out how we're going to do this together." These costs are going up. All of us, in a very united way, are committed to having these hard conversations together. But these amendments provide that runway, and it is through shared sacrifice, both through cuts and through a very small amount of money, effectively crowdsourcing what is that runway which will allow for us to have this conversation together in a healthy way.
I'll just add, morning or good afternoon now, we're in the city council. My name is Isaac Mclennan. I'm the president of the Portland Firefighter Association resident, Rosewood neighborhood, and a member of the LMBC. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Maps for inviting us to testify here today. Healthcare benefits, as you know, are a cornerstone of compensation for workers. Through good-faith negotiations with the city, firefighters and EMTs currently working under contract, we were able to agree on appropriate wages, hours, and benefits. And at the city's request, we have agreed to work through a collaborative labor management committee to select benefits that meet the needs of all city workers and our families. This is a complex subject, which talented committee members have dedicated themselves to understanding. In addition to agreeing to work through this committee, we've also agreed to split the costs of healthcare premiums, where the city pays 95% and the employee pays 5%. As we are now all aware, costs for healthcare have gone up, and we agree to maintain our portion of that premium. I'd ask council to do the same. I'm frustrated today because the committee collaborated in good faith and came to a consensus we were considering, and effectively council rejected it. I've attended LMBC since 2014, and I've served on the committee since 2022. In all of those years, the council has approved the LMBC recommendations, till now. These really damage our ability to collaborate in good faith, and it undermines the work and time the committee dedicates year-round. Firefighters may not always agree with others in the committee and at times vote in opposition, but we honor the process, and we stood by the committee's recommendation. I would ask council to do the same. I'm keenly aware of the budget situation ahead. I'm also aware that choices have been made to structure a new, top-heavy and costly form of government, and that other choices will be made on how we balance our budget as is required. But I've also said, on other budget issues, Moda's approved this new form of government. I've also said, on other, on other budget issues, modus approved this new form of government, but they did not vote to reduce healthcare benefits for city employees. None of us here can control the cost of healthcare, but I do expect that we work together to plan, prepare for these costs when they go up. We've known about these coming increases for months, and proper funding should have been set aside to address them. As firefighters, we push our bodies to the limit of our ability to help others. There's a saying that I hear in my firehouse, whatever the day demands, implying that no matter what we face, we will do our jobs to the best of our ability. When the bell goes off, there's no telling what emergency lies ahead. That does not stop us or slow us down. We respond, and we do our jobs. And I would ask council to do the same. And just to close, I would say, you know, I'm very, very, very thankful for all the work that's been going into these amendments, and I full-heartedly support them, as does my team. So, thank you.
James O'Loughlin, Labor Rep with Lyona 483. I'll speak briefly from the perspective of someone who does not sit on the LMBC. That group has a decades-long history of tangling with these challenges. And I know there's been a lot of talk about uniqueness of this challenge, but from what I've seen in this space, unique challenges are the precedent. So my concern here is largely that not adopting these amendments presented by Commissioner Rubio could lead to an undermining of that committee, which would leave us underprepared for facing those challenges in the collaborative way we have in the past that actually leads to the best outcomes for all parties. So we strongly encourage you to adopt the amendments as proposed.
Thank you. Commissioner Maps, you had a comment or question?
Just a quick question for the panel. I'm not sure if we have a second wave of panelists coming forward, but before I lose you folks, let me ask you this. You know, I'm inclined to support the amended ordinance. On the other hand, what can we do to make sure that we are not literally back in this exact same situation a year from now? We've had this collaborative committee, which has been meeting for years and years to solve this problem. And the unique thing is, I think, healthcare costs are increasing at a, at an unprecedented rate, let's put it that way. And I sure hope that when we hand off, you know, we're going to hand this council over to a whole new generation of, of folks. But why, why is it going to be different next year? What can we do to make sure that the folks who are here a year from now are not in the situation that we're in today?
Thank you, Commissioner. That's an excellent question. And I can tell you for the LMBC that we are already starting that conversation now. So I think we were a little bit blindsided by the double-digit increases that came this year. We didn't see those renewal numbers until January, and we didn't have direction in terms of cuts until February, and that only leaves us about four weeks to take a vote. We're just going to anticipate that we're going to see another double-digit increase, and we're going to start having those conversations literally this next month in terms of what are our values around the plans, as well as working with our consultant Aon to make sure that we're getting better information in front of the members of the committee. A lot of what we're asking for is what it looks like for impacts to members, and it can be very challenging for them to pull that information together in a very short turnaround time, which is basically what we're given between February and March. So we're going to start looking at those impacts now.
Yeah, if I can add to that, I mean, I think if you look at how we can posture or navigate, this is a city that obviously cares a lot about labor. I think something in the range of 95% of the employees in Portland are represented. We're a city that cares about healthcare and cares about those employees. And, you know, you look at the compensation packages, I was watching the slides earlier, it is true that our wages have gone up because we've needed to attract and recruit and retain the best employees we can. And part of this is how do we have that symbiotic relationship between our elected officials and our, our union representatives to ensure that we're moving forward together? My frustration with this process this year is, it was not until three weeks ago that we heard really what the issue was, which was that Providence is struggling to keep up with some of the competition. You know, we have the other two major hospitals in our, our city are merging. So I have no idea from a market navigation standpoint what is causing that. But we don't know how to bargain if we don't know what the concerns are. We need to sit down together in a non-adversarial way and not consider what can the city do to the employees to balance the budget, but instead consider what should we do together to navigate this problem together? We've all, I mean, I mean, this has been an interesting moment, I think, for all of us, because we've really all kind of come together in a, in a mutual way to figure out, how did we not know? How did we not have clear understanding about what this really pernicious problem was? And so, I mean, you have my commitment. I mean, my members are stuck with me for two years, so next year I'll be here for sure. How do we make sure we understand causally the, the impact of the cost increase and where the unexpected costs could come from? And what do we do to prepare? I mean, there's incredibly talented people on the LMBC. The EPA is isolated in some of that conversation because of a 20-year-old arbitration decision, and we have a different thing. But how do we make sure that collectively we are having these conversations? We now know what some of the concerns are, and we're ready to sit and discuss how we can address those. We're all, I think, pretty smart people. We need to do this differently next year, and next year is one month from now, not eight months from now.
Thank you. And I, I noticed that Ryan has his hand up. Ryan, did you want to jump in here on that question in particular? We're going to have another wave of labor come up and chat, but if you wanted to jump in at this moment?
Yeah, I just wanted to actually yield my time to our president, Jamie Doscher, who sits on the LMBC. I just wanted to make sure that the folks that were virtual aren't being skipped over in this process. So that's, I'm not trying to interrupt, just interject.
I got it. And we see, and thank you, thanks for joining us online. I'm going to say a couple of words here, and then I'm going to step aside and let the next group come up. Thank you in particular for the answer to that, to the question of how do we avoid being back in the exact same space a year from now? I really like the answers I've, I've heard, you know, I don't think I, I can't obviously push the LMBC around, but if I were to make a plea to your folks, should this pass, and I expect this to pass today, I hope that we can sit down, you know, literally next week, and start the discussion about how we avoid being here. Clearly, one of the things that we just didn't anticipate this year is what, how do we navigate double-digit increases in healthcare costs? And that's just a scenario that we didn't quite plan for, and I'll take some blame for this over my portfolio. We did not fully budget for, for the, what the bills actually are. And we all, moving forward, as we build our budgets and sort of negotiate how we're going to split costs, we need to plan for a universe where our healthcare costs, you know, can potentially go up above 10% a year. And I'll let the smart people at this table and in the, in the audience figure out how we get from there. Thank you, colleagues. I have no more questions, but I do think that we have more labor partners who would like to address council.
So if you have more invited testimony, let's hear it. Otherwise, let's go to public testimony.
Okay. Thanks, folks. I think it looks like we have some folks in person. And Jamie, are you testifying online?
Hello.
Welcome. Thanks for being here. I will turn it over to our partners to figure out how you want to run the show.
So I, again, I'm sorry, it's my role as presiding officer to be a jerk. I would encourage people to be as succinct as possible. We have a very long afternoon session starting in about 52 minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today and speak with you. My name is Sarah Curtis. I'm a managed care coordinator at OHSU, and I'm also the chief steward of AFSMI Local 328. OHSU is the largest employer in the city of Portland, and AFSMI Local 328 represents about 40% of that workforce, which is over 8,000 members. We are predominantly healthcare workers who live in the city of Portland. We are your constituents. I'm here today in solidarity with my union siblings from AFSMI Local 189. As a managed care coordinator, I'm responsible for obtaining insurance authorizations for necessary medical care and advising patients of their out-of-pocket costs for their treatment. I don't imagine that any of you have ever had to call a cancer patient and tell them that they can't come to their chemo appointment because they can't afford it, or a stroke patient and tell them that they can't come have their MRIs done. And I hope you never have to do that, because I'm here to tell you, it's horrible. Every single time you have to do it. The first time you do it, the 500th time you do it, it is absolutely devastating. We care deeply about our patients, and it affects us greatly when we have to deny them care because the out-of-pocket costs are too high. Delayed or denied care leads to worse outcomes. This includes, Mayor Wheeler, as you spoke about, changes in networks. The continuation of care agreements that she's talking about negotiating, three to four months is a dream. They're usually one to two months, and to get into a specialist is usually six months to 12 months. So you're looking at many months where people with potentially terminally ill or very serious conditions may go without care. The reality is that there will be families who lose their loved ones because they couldn't afford care or have timely access to it. I can see in a patient's chart where they work. When I have to make these calls to my union siblings and their families, I will know how each of you voted today, and I hold you personally responsible for the choices you made. On behalf of myself and the 8,000 healthcare workers that I represent, I'm asking you to do the right thing for our union members who have dedicated their lives to serving our community and to fully fund their healthcare benefits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners and Mayor Wheeler, for having us today. I'm Jacob Brostoff. I'm the Executive Vice President of AFSMI Local 189, City of Portland Local, and I'm also entering my 20th year of service with the city. I'm proud to say, I work in the Community Safety Division and the Safe Blocks Program. Along with the other city unions that are here today, we represent many of our workers, and we are the lifeblood of the city of Portland. We can't do our work without affordable, comprehensive healthcare, which is an important part of our compensation. And many of our coworkers do dangerous work every day. So it's incumbent upon you, our employer, to provide healthcare that meets our families' needs, threats to our ability to afford wellness, or threats to our ability to do the work of our city. I briefly want to thank council offices who champion the solution to the healthcare cost increase crisis that we're facing. So thank you to Commissioners Maps, Rubio, and Ryan. And I especially want to thank Michelle Rodriguez, Gillian Nishon, and T.J. McHugh for their hard work to salvage the efforts of the Labor Management Benefits Committee. That process needs to be revisited and repaired before we have this conversation again next year and in the years to come. And as Rachel said, that needs to start sooner than later. Thank you for your time today, and I appreciate your continued support for employees and the workers that we represent. Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob.
Good afternoon. I'm Jacob Doelmeyer, resident in Portland and Secretary-Treasurer of Local 43 Portland Firefighters Association. Thank you for your time this morning, this afternoon now. I'm here today to speak in opposition to the proposed cuts proposed by BHR and to speak reluctantly in support of the amendment by Commissioner Rubio. Every day, today, in fact, firefighters left their families at home to stand ready across the city to respond to calls for help. We do this knowing that our job exposes us to a high risk of injury, cancer, PTSD, sleep deprivation and disorders, immunocompromised illnesses, and emotional dysregulation. The exertion required in responding time after time to render aid in chaotic environments takes a toll on our bodies and our ability to be good parents, friends, spouses, to the people that we love when we're away from the job. Still, you depend on us to answer when you need help. And we take great pride in our responding to your needs to protect our community. So when our families need help, we expect that you treat your responsibility to them with the same sense of duty. I'm asking you to vote against the recommendations of BHR and for the amendment as proposed by Commissioner Rubio. Do not vote to reduce the benefits that our families depend on while we are away, that serve as our lifeline when we are injured or overwhelmed, and that we need in order to continue a career of service. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you. And I see Jamie with, on the line. Jamie, do you want to jump in here?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Jamie Doscher, and I, how's my sound?
You're kind of quiet in here. I don't know if that's you or something that we can fix.
Probably not me. I've never been described as quiet.
What should we do?
I will keep talking with my introduction, and you can follow me if I, I fully discontinue.
That sounds great.
So just some background. Whoa. I would like to thank everyone today for the opportunity to speak, specifically to Matt's office for the invite and for Rubio's office for the amendment. Some background on me, like Rachel, I've been on this committee for 10 plus years, and Lyona represents members in PBOB, EES, and Parks and Recreation. I happen to be a recreation board myself, which is why I am the rep for the LMBC. For rep. Unions highly value the ability to bargain our healthcare in our collective bargaining agreements, but we only bargain two things, the 95/5 split and the process that we get our healthcare through the LMBC. If you were experiencing increased healthcare costs, and my understanding is that City Council directed BHR to keep the cost at 8%, a restriction that the LMBC has never experienced before. Well, I think that ultimately the LOA that is being proposed through the amendment will be better for members. I'm frustrated with how we got here as it seems that this solution has only been made possible by circumventing that bargaining process. I want to thank my union siblings for the effort they've gone through to complete an LOA in a record time. I believe we're at 48 hours. And it's been a short turnaround time, especially when typically LOAs take months to crosser. I also want to echo Rachel's comments, and I appreciate the work that Michelle does. I think that this is the fault of no one. It's just an increased cost of healthcare. But I want to encourage that next year the LMBC is presented with the info earlier, more robust information, the information or the responses to the questions that we asked about how this impacts our numbers, and that more possibility, possibilities are explored that the LMBC can be empowered to recommend a benefit plan that is robust and affordable to our people. So thank you for this time.
Thank you, Jamie. And I think, oh, looks like we have a little bit more, another labor person here. Ms. Lauder, please go if you're here to testify.
Hi, I'm Lena Alice Lauder. I'm with Lyona Local 43. I am the field representative for our city employees. And I just wanted to take a time with you today just to make sure you understand who this really affects. While, while it does affect all our members, we do have a group of individuals that are part-time employees. As a former part-time employee, I was almost paid 400 a month for my insurance. As a single mom, that's a lot. Like, I have to figure out what I was going to pay for. With this increase, it really affects those part-time employees. It's a small amount of employees, but how do I go back to our members and say, hey, the plan doesn't change, but you have to pay more? How do we get really great people to take these jobs, which I will tell you, six of them are Team Force employees? How do we get people to come and apply for these jobs if they can't get the health benefits that they need and deserve? How are they going to pay for that? That's all I wanted to say. I just want to make sure that you understand what will happen.
Sure. And thank you, Ms. Lauder, for those comments. And in discussions around this, the bind that some of your, your folks are in has been pointed out to me. I totally get it. Frankly, I don't know if I have a solution today, but I will tell you, I am committed to working with our city staff and our labor partners to try to figure out if there's a way that we can move forward. And I believe that completes our presentation from labor today. Is that correct? Do any folks have anything else they want to get on the table? Well, thank you. I'll let you get back to your, to your seats unless my colleagues have questions for labor, they want to surface right now. All right. Well, colleagues, I believe this is the moment where we would ask any questions or have any dialogue around the amended ordinance. Does anyone have anything that they want Does anyone have anything that they want to erase? Well, the mayor's not here, but we have to kind of move forward, I would assume. Our colleagues, are you okay with me calling the vote even though the mayor's out of the room?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm hungry, yeah.
Let me ask the city attorneys, is there something else that I should do?
Just want to put on the record, there's no public testimony.
No public testimony. Yeah, I think we got to everyone who was, so no one has signed up to testify who hasn't testified already. And Mr. Mayor, your timing is perfect because we are just about to call the roll. Would you like to do that, or shall I?
What are we calling the roll on?
The amended ordinance.
And there was no additional public testimony?
No additional public testimony.
All right, to Rubio 1, that was the technical amendment. Any further discussion? Call the roll on Rubio 1, which is the amendment to 336.
Ryan.
I'm just going to make a statement first to say that I'm going to do my quick vote on this one and make remarks on the second.
Oh, I was going to do it on the first.
You were going to do it the other way.
Can I ask a quick render show? Did we just first and second, or did we actually vote on the amendments earlier? We did not vote on the amendments earlier?
We have two amendments on the table, Rubio 1, which is technical, Rubio 2, which is the extension. We voted on an amendment to amendment 2.
Ah, I see.
And I just wanted to clean it up, just so we're just voting on amendments.
Yeah, I'm glad you're here.
Now we're voting on two amendments. Now we're voting on two amendments, then we'll go back and vote on the main motion as amended to the degree that any amendments pass. So now we're on Rubio 1, just the amendment. Call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Please call the roll on Rubio 2.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, presenters and management, for your testimony. First, thank you, presenters and management, for your presentation and for the testimony from our labor partners. I apologize, I'm getting, if you're getting a little angry look from me, it's not your fault. So anyway, on to my remarks. It's a part of our city values to provide the best healthcare system we possibly can, and our employees deserve that. The market pressures are real. COVID did a number on our healthcare system. Workforce conditions ignited work for justice, which included much-needed support for our healthcare employees. Those necessary investments are now hitting consumers. We are trying to find the balance between our commitment to superb benefits for our families and for being fiscally responsible. Let's be clear, this is a temporary fix for this year. Next year, we will have even harder negotiations as healthcare costs continue to rise and budget shrink. There will be a need to be, to have concessions on both sides, shared sacrifice as we partner, key word, to serve the residents of our city. I hope we've learned from this that we need to start negotiations early. 11th-hour negotiations are no way to ensure fairness and build trust in our partnership with labor. That being said, I'm very happy we came to a solution that is fair at this moment in time. Thank you to the chiefs of staff leading this compromise, namely Gillian, Michelle, and TJ, for working tirelessly with labor leaders to arrive at something we can live with today and move forward in trust. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
I want to reiterate some of the pieces I've shared with labor leadership over the last really 24 hours on a number of components here. I'm very happy that the compromise has been struck on a temporary solution for this year. I'm going to support it. I appreciate the skin in the game that's being demonstrated by all involved, truly I do. But next year's going to be rougher, and we have, in addition to many of the procedural aspects that have been alluded to, we really need to be partners on containing costs that doesn't support our workers. There is plenty of opportunities for efficiency in our government, and we really need your help on finding ways that are not on the back of workers to manage the cost of our form of government. So I just would implore you to partner with us as we evaluate the best way to launch this new form of government, where we, what are the requirements, what aren't the requirements, and let's not put it on the back of workers and taxpayers as we navigate all that. I vote aye.
Maps.
I want to thank especially council staff, who I know literally have been working around the clock for several days to try to make this base ordinance better. I want to thank our labor partners, who have just been incredibly creative and persistent and urging council to do better in this space. I will also, I'm going to vote aye on this amendment, and I'm going to vote aye on the base ordinance. But like Commissioner Gonzalez, I'm really going to make a plea to everybody who has to sit at this table, let's come together and develop some strategies for how we address labor costs, not labor costs, but healthcare costs next year in particular. Everything that I see at this hour indicates that we're likely to face a similar paradox in 365 days. I think we can plan for this. We've got great people and great minds, and I think constructive folks at this table. It's been a real pleasure and honor to work with you, to try to get us to this moment. I think this has been some of the most extraordinary policymaking I've seen in my three and a half years in this building, which is why I vote aye.
Rubio.
So first, I just want to acknowledge that this is a city value healthcare that we deeply care about, all the health of the employees and all employees' dependents. And I want to also acknowledge at the same time, I know that the city team that works really hard to provide counsel a lot of advice, especially when it comes to the city's financial outlook, they do their best. So I do want to appreciate Tracy and Ron and Michelle and Santos and Heidi and Tim and Ruth as well for all their work and their guidance. And second, just to be blunt, the health insurance rate increases that were tossed into our collective laps just a few months ago created a lot of havoc in an already challenging budget year, and also had the potential to really create havoc and instability in the lives of many city employees and their dependents. And so for me, these decisions were way too consequential that affected our city employees to do within a matter of months, and the result has been that we've all had to really dig in in a very short amount of time to get here where we are today. Also, we know that it's going to get harder, as people have talked about already, so these conversations really must continue. And like we've heard in testimony, this doesn't solve our problem, but it does give us the runway for the work ahead. And I deeply, deeply appreciate everyone's leaning in, especially among our labor leaders, and putting truth on the table in the conversations that we've had over the past several weeks. And I especially appreciate your vigilance, your directness, and your willingness to figure out a path that got us here today. It's not a problem that we can solve in a few weeks. It's going to take the year, as people have mentioned. And what we've learned after this last week is that we should start these conversations immediately. Also, healthcare is absolutely a human right. It's fundamental, especially for our workers who work in service to the public, and we need healthcare reform in this country now. And it's a vital benefit, and it's touching all of our most vulnerable places, which is why I think I, like others, had that visceral reaction, namely our families, and in particular, our children, where some of these changes could be devastating. So it's worth working on to the very last hour, I guess that's what I want to say. And just very quickly, I want to really thank folks that really came together from various unions over this last week, Rachel Whiteside, Jacob Brostoff, Rob Martineau, Aaron Schmals, Ryan Sotomayor, Jamie Dosher, Isaac McLennan, and all of those who showed up to testify as well today. I also want to really thank my staff, Gillian Shoney, for her tremendous leadership and lift on this, who got to work right away with our labor partners and city staff, and also want to appreciate and lift up Michelle from Commissioner Map's office as well. So these conversations need to start in earnest this summer, and I really trust that everyone at the table will be leaning in and working the problem with the intention of getting us through this challenge so that we can provide the stability and consistency and reliability for every worker and their loved ones who depend on this healthcare from the city. So I'll be watching closely and willing to continue to lean in myself. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I want to thank the HR staff. I want to thank members of the Labor Management Benefits Committee, some of whom are here in front of us today. I'd like to thank Aaron and the Portland Police Association. Aaron, as I've said on many occasions, I really appreciate your communicative nature, the fact that you reach out to all of us, that you share your thoughts, your ideas, your concerns, and frankly, help us with an attitude of problem-solving. And that's been a breath of fresh air, and frankly, it's been really helpful. And I want to personally acknowledge you for that, but I also want to thank the association overall. I want to thank all of you for the work that you've put into amending the city of Portland Employee Benefits Program. And I also want to thank our BHR staff in particular. Their job is not easy. And let's remember that this issue, somebody said it really well during the testimony, none of us created this. This was handed to us. It was thrown at us. And I want you to know that even behind closed doors, your BHR staff advocates strongly for you, and they remind us at every turn that we have to be a competitive employer. So on one hand, it's about the value of caring for our fellow city workers, but it's also, we want to be a competitive employer in a really difficult employment environment. And we, and I'll even use "we" as an example, I am constantly admonishing them on fiscal responsibility and the need to remember that while we take care of our city employees, we also have a core mission of providing services to the public. And we have a difficult time under these budget circumstances being able to do it the way I think all of us in this room would like us to be able to do it. So I want to acknowledge the BHR staff. I also want to mirror the word of caution that my fellow colleagues have mentioned up here. This is not a one-and-done problem. I do agree with your testimony that we need more space. We just did not have enough space to find a workable solution, given the deadline, which is today, to agree on a plan and move forward. And so this may not be a perfect solution. It may not even be the most cost-effective. It may not even provide the best services to you and your families, but it buys us time. But I really want to underscore that that time must be used aggressively, because the fiscal calculations, and I didn't bother bringing Tim up here to talk about that, that they are fairly significant to the overall budget. These increases are cumulative, in fact, they're additive, over the course of the next several years. There will have to be changes to the healthcare program between now and next year, or this will balloon. And I won't be here to suffer the consequences of this. You all will, and many of my colleagues here will as well. So I just want to put that cautionary note, that we really have to double down, and I'm going to roll over on your expertise and your ideas and your thoughts over the course of the next eight-plus months to see how far we can get along that path before I pack my box. At any rate, thank you all. I vote aye on the amendment. The amendment passes to the main motion, 336 is amended.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is passed as amended to the second ordinance, 337. Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. We are adjourned until 27 minutes from now, and we will reconvene.